Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight for our regular Board of Directors meeting. The time is now 5:34 and I'd like to call the meeting to order and first do a roll call to confirm the attendees. I'm Julie Bocanegra. Director Victoria Bradford.
Here.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Director Ginny Ronwal.
Here.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll.
Here.
Thank you. All right. Good evening again. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 2028, in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, temporarily suspends portions of the Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation requires that all attendance at an open public meeting not take place in person but occur remotely, including the Board of Directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. At this time, I would like to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. So our first order of business is that we need to make a motion to excuse Director Rachel Rogers from the meeting this evening. She's out of town and traveling and not able to join us.
So moved?
I'm sorry, what was? Did you say salute or?
I said so moved. I move we excuse Director Rogers.
And I seconded it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me, Victoria.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And Ginny?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right. Now we'll go ahead and move to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the tonight's agenda?
Director Grunwald moves that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Director Bradford seconds.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me, Victoria.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Great. All right. Next, we have special recognition. It is Native American Heritage Month. We have a proclamation to read. I believe that Director Bradford is going to read the proclamation this evening.
I am.
All right.
Okay, this is a proclamation from the Governor's office for the state of Washington, whereas Native Americans have inhabited the area now known as Washington State since time in memorial. Today, 29 federally recognized Indian tribes out of state tribes with treaty reserved rights and other tribal communities reside in Washington. And whereas members and descendants of tribes around the United States and First Nations of Canada also reside in the state of Washington. And whereas Native American contributions and values have shaped the social, political, environmental, and economic fabric of the state, while also enhancing freedom, prosperity, and cultural diversity. And whereas the novel coronavirus has affected us all, but it is of particular concern to tribal communities. Historically, Native Americans have faced many foreign diseases and turned to their cultural knowledge as a resource during difficult times, which holds true today during the battle against COVID-19. Tribes and Indian organizations are actively working to protect elders, tribal communities, and families from the spread of COVID-19. And whereas state law RCW 43.376 directs the governor and state agencies to establish government-to-government relationships with Indian tribes in order to enhance and formalize working relationships with the tribes through collaboration and consultation. Whereas state law RCW 28A.320.170 mandates the teaching of tribal history, culture, and government in common schools, which will contribute greatly to improving schools' history curriculum and enhances awareness for a better cultural understanding. And whereas the state of Washington has designated the Friday immediately following the Fourth Thursday in November, a state legal and school holiday known as Native American Heritage Day. And whereas Washington joins other states across the nation in celebrating Native American Heritage Month, honoring the unique heritage of this continent's first people and reaffirming the commitment to respect each tribe sovereignty and cultural identity. Now therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as Native American Heritage Month and November 27, 2020, as Native American Heritage Day. And the seal's over part of this. I mean, we encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. And it was signed by the governor on the fifth day of November 2020.
Nice. Thank you, Victoria. Were you gonna say something? Did you say something, Victoria, or?
Oh, no, I just, I think it's a, I mean, it's an important recognition that we need to be very mindful of because our Native American people in our community are, were here first and they've had a very challenging history. And so bringing back respect for their, for the culture and their values, I think, is really important for us to understand.
I would agree with that.
I think it's actually. I, when we, when we attend WASD events, we often hear the beginning of each of the meetings, that the leader of the meeting or whoever's sort of kicking it off will name the tribes who had inhabited the land since time immemorial. And if you go down to the Vancouver area, there are some presentations and things. Stick is right. It's, it's been occupied and curated and maintained as a place for people for, since, since time immemorial, since before Europeans got here and before our, my people began to record history. And I agree. Yeah. It's important to remember this and to always be engaged in trying to see them and help them, especially those are, those, those students of ours who are from non-federally recognized tribes. We know that the Chinaman people around here don't have federal recognition and therefore don't have a landed reservation. But their students are in our schools and they're our neighbors and friends. I'm glad we're taking time to recognize that.
Thanks, Rob. All right. Any other comments? Thanks, Victoria, for reading that.
Happy to do it.
All right. Next on our agenda is the board consent agenda. Interration, a motion for approval.
Julia, I move that we accept the board consent agendas presented.
Director Grunwald seconds.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me, Victoria.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next is the superintendent's consent agenda. Same thing. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
Director Bradford. Oh, go ahead, Ginny.
Director Grunwald moves to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Director Bradford seconds.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye for me, Victoria.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda. Sorry. Is the superintendent report. Mike, do you have the report for us this evening?
I do. Yeah. So a lot, lot going on. I'll start with every Tuesday, the Department of Health puts out updated numbers of cases from the previous 14 days. Our report came out today. The number was 171.55 cases per 100,000 in the county over the last 14 days. They kind of keep a running, you know, the numbers over the last four or five weeks. And so the first one that they have is October 5th and it was 95.6 through last week at 131.42 and then we've jumped to 171. The, you know, we've seen a lot of reports, not just in our community, but in the state and across the country of cases increasing. And I think that that in some respects was expected once the weather started turning and people started coming back indoors. I know last week, the state of Oregon came out with some updated guidance, actually loosening the guidance for returning to school. In the state of Oregon, we're under, we're hearing that the state of Washington is going to come out with some new guidance as well, the Department of Health. There in the last week have been a few other reports that have come out from folks that have done some of the, the guidance, guidance of the governor. There was an IMD report that came out last week kind of modeling King County and looking at the, kind of comparing the impact of in, in school. What, what in-school versus hybrid versus remote might do in terms of case transmissions. But honestly, we're just kind of waiting to see if there's any change in the guidance from the governor or the Department of Health. We've just kind of settled in at this point into the status quo, which is what we had said would happen. We have been working still behind the scenes to look at what hybrid would look like. There's been work looking at the kindergarten program that we have. And I think this week, yesterday, Camus Battleground and Waschugel started their small group kindergarten program that we had talked about, the county moving forward with. My understanding is that Vancouver maybe is next week. And I'm not sure about Hawkinson and Ridgefield at the end of the month of November. We've been in place, I think, seven or eight weeks already. We, we've had conversations with our teachers for kindergarten, with EEA, with respect to the workload that that creates on our kindergarten teachers. We've been working through a survey with them, have come up with options. And our principals are working with teachers directly as well as, I know Thursday, there's going to be a meeting with EEA kind of looking at the model for kindergarten and what we can't do to potentially mitigate some of the work in that. In the secondary schools, we operate in, in middle schools on trimesters. We operate in high schools on semesters. The trimester would be coming up, I think, in the next two weeks or thereabouts in middle schools. In order for us to be ready for hybrid, if we ever get to the point of being able to be in hybrid, we had been looking at some work on rebuilding schedules that ultimately kind of morphed into some conversations with EEA. And there'll be further meetings on Thursday with EEA as well. What we're looking at in middle school is to not, not in the short term, impact the schedules for our, our students or our staff. We're looking at kind of transforming middle school into a semester as opposed to the trimester, so that it buys us more time to kind of work out what second semester might look like. And you'll remember that our MOU has in it that we wouldn't go to hybrid until we had four consecutive weeks in moderate. The definition of moderate right now is below 75 cases per 100,000. We're currently at 171.55. I think that there's something like five weeks to go until Christmas and maybe nine or 10 until we would get to what would be second semester. So each week that we continue to have cases either rise or even just stay flat, it, it kind of pushes out that timeline for when hybrid might occur. So there, there isn't any, there isn't any movement to, I mean, obviously, we can't, we can't even consider moving to hybrid. Probably at the earliest until sometime after, at this point, almost even after Christmas. So we're just at, at this point, just kind of looking at the cases and seeing how they work. Some of the things that we're starting to hear is that the state might actually start considering restricting some of the things like restaurants or bars in order to potentially lower the cases so that we could get kids back to school earlier. I, I do think that there is a, at the state level, an acknowledgement and a growing understanding of the impact on our schools being closed for the length of time that they have been and that they continue to be, and the impact that that has on our students and our children and the negative impact of that. So I guess what I would say with respect to the COVID situation, we just continue to monitor where we're at right now. At least we've had, we've had some weeks of consistency, I think, for our staff. I think that's actually a positive for them to have the ability to just kind of get into the actual work that they've been doing all along, but not having this, you know, well, what's next? What's next? What's next? I was, I was in a conversation today with one of our assist team members who, who earlier today, we got an email from OSPI that there was an emergency rule on attendance that had been apparently was being adopted or had been adopted. And then our assist team, which are student coordinators that work with the student system and with our buildings, they were in a meeting with OSPI's student team members where this came up about this emergency rule. And the emergency team members, members at OSPI weren't even aware that this had happened. So I don't illustrate this to, to do anything other than to show at all levels, things are occurring so rapidly that sometimes it's hard, even at, in Olympia, or sometimes maybe more often, it's hard in Olympia, to communicate what's happening. And that, you know, like I've said all along, we apologize for the impacts of some of these seems like decisions come and then they change and that it's just kind of the world that we live in right now. Understand the significant impact that that has on everyone. And I just think we're all doing our best to try to serve our kids as, as well as we can. We will have further meetings with EEA, with our teachers, as we start to kind of look to the future of what, what school looks like potentially after the first of the year. I think we did see some good news yesterday that there, you know, we may be closer to some sort of a vaccine. I'm not saying that we're closer to distribution of the vaccine. We're not necessarily closer to understanding whether the vaccine would be mandatory if it becomes available. We're not certain whether or not our folks would be willing to take the vaccine. But at least we got some good news from Pfizer yesterday, and hopefully we will continue to receive that news because we, we need hope. We need to have, we need to have the view for how this ends. I'm very hopeful with that news that, you know, last year, it was a much different graduation, obviously, for our seniors having this happen in March. And I was telling somebody today, you know, when I first got into the position, one of the first things that we did was we had graduation. And one of the things that I don't know that I was necessarily ready for was standing in front of about 4,000 or 5,000 people to talk at graduation. And so that was something that you, you, you know, you put on your shoes really quickly and you step up and you do that. And I enjoyed doing that. And last, last early summer, last spring, we weren't able to do that with graduation. I'm actually hopeful that we can look forward to some sort of a ceremony this spring for our students where I could, again, I, I look forward to a time where I can get in front of 5,000, 10,000 people and, and welcome everybody back and say, what tremendous perseverance every one of these students has had going through this situation that we've lived through for a period of time. Hopefully, hopefully that's June of this year. I'm not sure whether that'll be June of this year or not. Over the last few weeks, I've continued to go out and meet with principals and just get their feedback on, on what's happening in individual meetings. And today I had my first individual meeting with an associate principal. So I'm excited to expand my meetings into the associate principal group. I think that it's important for us, for me, to have as many relationships as I possibly can cultivate within our system. I think it's helpful for me to know our associate principals well, so that when positions open up, whether it's at the district office, whether it's a principal's position, kind of have an idea of what their goals are and what their hopes are for the future. This particular associate I met with is, his wife is going to have a baby most likely on Friday. So he's, he's got not only the pandemic and working through that process, he's got two children, five and three, and another one coming. So he's got, he's got a lot of stuff on his plate right now. And so very thankful for his administration at his building for being there to support him. But I'm, I'm excited to get the opportunity to get out and talk with all of our associate principals as well. I know that Gail, I can't see her on the screen. She's kind of like the purveyor of good news. I, I have to say, Gail, I haven't read the good news report. So my guess is I may be stealing one or two of these things from you at this point. But I had mentioned earlier that Amy Haynes had been working through our lobbyists with Senator Wellman, working on connecting Hila with, with Senator Wellman. She had, has an interest in some sort of proclamation honoring Henrietta Lacks and her contribution to medicine and to society. So a letter was actually written from the Students of Color Union at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School to Washington State Representatives Senators. I want to read it real quick and we'll see if I can read well enough. It says, Dear Washington State Representatives and Senators, as students of color at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School, we have come to recognize the need for Henrietta Lacks's story to be heard, absorbed, and used as inspiration for meaningful progress. Henrietta, Henrietta Lacks was a black woman and young mother to five children. Henrietta unfortunately developed cervical cancer, which resulted in treatment at Johns Hopkins Hospital's colored ward, in quotes. During a biopsy, doctors remarked on the unusual appearance and size of her cervical tumor. When the tissue was tested, doctors and researchers found that Henrietta's cells did not die in cell culture. Although Henrietta Lacks ultimately passed away in 1951, her cells would continue to impact the world. Since her cells were so prolific, scientists had enough time to develop life-saving vaccines and treatments. Because of Henrietta's cells, we have the polio vaccine, the AIDS treatment cocktail, certain cancer drugs, and her cells are even being used in the development of a coronavirus vaccine this year. The troubling part is this, Henrietta's family was not aware of her tissues being used, replicated, and sold. Informed consent laws were different then, certainly, but little effort to reconcile with the Lacks family was made on behalf of Johns Hopkins recently. Furthermore, while conditions and policies in the medical field have improved, we know that inequities persist for Americans of color in arenas like maternal and infant mortality, healthcare cost and access and pain management. We write to insist the Washington State Legislature acknowledge the contribution of Henrietta Lacks's cells and use elements of Henrietta's story to inspire needed change toward both culturally responsive medicine and education. Here is an outline of our suggestions. One, publicly recognize the contribution of Henrietta Lacks's cells to modern medicine in the context in which her cells were taken. One, where educational, racial, and economic barriers all affected Henrietta, Henrietta and the Lacks family. Two, promote through policy culturally responsive curriculum within all K-12 and post-secondary schools in Washington, particularly medical preparatory programs. Three, continue to address economic inequalities that continue to a lack, contribute to a lack of medical access in the state of Washington. Henrietta Lacks's story must not only end with a Vancouver Health and Bioscience High School that bears her name. All legislators have a responsibility to address the contributions people of color have made to the medical field and make data-driven, dis-stated-driven changes in our state to advance equality for all in medicine and education. Sincerely, the Students of Color Union at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School. I, I, an amazing letter that absolutely, I think, Senator Wellman, as I understand it, is going to do exactly what they're recommending in the legislature this winter. So it's going to be very exciting to recognize that when that occurs. Hopefully, we can get maybe Senator Wellman to zoom in on a meeting and kind of share with the board and the community the impact of our students and her conversations with our students. It's just a great, that's a great thing. I also want to acknowledge again, as we have in the past, the work that our libraries have done to refresh their books, the books that they have. The, the district, the board supported freeing up $10,000 for every school in the district and an additional two for any that are over 50% free and reduced. So 10,000 to 12,000 to allow our libraries to kind of refresh their collection on books around equity and diversity and inclusion. We have two of the schools that actually reached out through, I'm sure more than two, but I've got some examples from two of the schools. They did community surveys to see kind of what kind of feedback they might receive. Furpress, some of the comments from Furpress parents were, this is wonderful. My child's life circumstances are rarely represented, even in part in most children's books. Another parent, I think all of the categories are important. I feel like kids should see themselves reflected in books, but also see how other people live as well. Another was, my son often feels isolated, like there's something wrong with him or he is alone. Having books that represent him would help him feel more confident with himself. And then from Cascade, one parent commented, diverse books were underrepresented in my own reading experience. I want my kids to see the world from these perspectives. So I want to say a particular thank you to Michelle Annette at Cascade and Ben Court at Furpress that kind of led that. But I want to, I want to applaud the school board for all the work that has occurred around diversity, equity, inclusion, that has supported this work that's happening in our schools. A tremendous thing. And then my last thing I would mention, and Gail probably will say if she hasn't, and I know we talked about this and I shared the video, but the, the video that the Community Relations Department put out on Hollingsworth Academy and the renaming of 49th to Hollingsworth Academy and, and honoring, I think it's Dorothy Hollingsworth, who I understand she just earned 100. I think that's what it says in the video. And there's some hope that she may somehow be represented when we finally have the ability to bring kids in. But just another great example. And, and I think within the district, we're doing things to try to promote opportunities for people of color to begin jobs and advance through the district. So I'm real, I'm real pleased that we've had a pretty significant transformation this last week. Rob and Clarissa Hightower, our Director of Equity and Inclusion, were part of a group of districts that put out a social and political expression statement. I think that's what we called it. That was emailed out to the staff. That got a tremendous response from staff. I think we were maybe the first or second to put that out. Other districts are on the same page with us on that. So feel real good about the work that we're doing. And I want to say thank you to the school board for, honestly, in my mind, being a head, right, being out front on this. The district had done a lot of work around, I guess I would say socioeconomic equity, but hadn't done a lot of work. Well, I'm not gonna say hadn't done, hadn't been as, as quick on the racial equity work. And, and I don't think it was because of the school board. I think it was just the district being kind of slow to make that happen. And with the appointment of Clarissa in her position and the committees that we have now in place and a lot of the things happening, I think we have a lot of really great things happening. So I want to thank school board for being supportive of everything that we're doing in that area. And I could go on for another 22 minutes if you'd like me to, or I could stop because I think I'm going to talk about some financial things in a budget reports. We'll all stop at that point and turn it back over to Julie and others.
Yes. You, you'll get another chance to talk in a little bit, but we're going to turn it over now.
I'm gonna take a drink right now.
Okay. We are going to turn it over to Gil, who is going to give us some good news.
I am. And actually, I have enough to share. I can only still thunder on a couple of things. So and as you start looking through the good news, I want to highlight some of our community partners that have really been stepping up with our schools and students. At Heritage High School, Sean Meng hurt, reached out and the engineering class needed tools to complete projects. And a lot of the students didn't have tools at home to work on some of these projects. And so she'd been in contact to work on some of these projects. And so um, she'd been in contact over the last several months with several of our um, building contractors in the community. And they said, you know, if you ever need anything, please let us know. And so she said, you know, hey, we could, we could use some basic tools for our students to do some work at home. Well, if you watch this video, you will see they didn't just give them a couple tools or old tools. They went out and they bought these gorgeous toolkits and gave them to um, the students. And I mean, these are, these are beautiful toolkits and the, the students were just overwhelmed. But more importantly, they are excited and already out using them. And so thank you to um, our building contractor partners in the community. And we also received generous donations from the one hundred and ninety-second Avenue Walmart. They provided us with a number of um, school supplies and things like that that we're in the process of distributing out through the elementaries as well as through our um, family and community resource centers so that students can complete projects at home and have those supplies available. Um, we continue to um, also help our families through drive-through pantries. Um, there's one pictured here at Pacific Middle School. And then also Orchards Elementary recently held a community resource fair. And so we've been used to seeing that we've been giving out food and even fresh food. Orchards went um, a step further and they gave out um, clothing, hygiene items, bedding, other things like that. And several of our community or family and community resource centers are also going to have very similar events coming up between now and Christmas. And we'll, we'll highlight those as well. We do have some milestones to celebrate here in the district. And Mike mentioned one of those. And that was the tie that's already happening between Forty-Ninth Street Academy and the, and Dorothy Hollingsworth and the Hollingsworth family. Um, it recently was her one-hundredth birthday. And so the students had been exchanging greetings with her and her family. Um, and she is just delighted to have the, the Forty-Ninth Street Academy being renamed for her for um, the process that went into the naming of the school as well as um, just the opportunity that the students are offered there. They have a family business. And so she decided that instead of the students wishing her happy birthday, she wanted to wish them um, happy birthday on her behalf. And so she sent gifts that were manufactured from their family business. Um, and in this video, you'll see a little bit about that as well as then the students doing a card and sending her back. And there really is a sincere desire that um, when we do open the school um, this coming summer into fall, that if she is willing and able, she, well, not she's willing, if she's able and the community health um, conditions permit, that she'll come down and visit the school. Um, we also had realized and started to plan for, it is our seventy-five, seventy-fifth year of incorporation as we've brought together um, some, eight small districts in the community in nineteen forty-five formed uh, and became the Evergreen Public School District or Evergreen School District one-one-four is, is our official name. And so we've been posting the last several weeks, what we're calling Throwback Thursday. And we've been going through the old archives and annuals that we have in our records department and posting things of note, including um, here's the Future Farmers of America, which was the largest club on campus at the then Union High School with seventy or fifty-eight members strong, which was a, a big group. Um, we've posted pictures of some of our old buildings. And then we'll continue to um, post buildings, or post photos, just because people don't necessarily know the history of the district. And really, um, how long we've been incorporated here. So that will continue. Um, and then, of course, our schools are continuing to make connections with their students and keep the school culture alive here in present day. Um, there's a great story about how the Marion staff um, has continued kind of a reward system for good behavior and good deeds. And that used to culminate every Friday with, you know, calling kids down to the office and things like that. So they've kept that alive and the administrators are actually doing that and then taking the rewards out to the students at their homes. And then we um, again, decided to celebrate with a virtual groundbreaking at Mountain View High School. And you will see um, students um, talking about what the new high school will mean to them and turning some dirt. And it is the sophomore leadership class that participated because they'll be the first senior class into the new Mountain View. And we open it in another year or two. And then next good news, um, we'll be bringing you the Y East virtual groundbreaking. So that's just a little preview there. So um, that is your good news for this month.
Thank you, Gil. Always fun to see all the pictures and things. And um, I have been enjoying the historical photos on Instagram and Facebook. It's kind of fun to see all those old-time photos and um, you know, where we are beginning, right?
Exactly. And it's been really fascinating for me to go back through the yearbooks and also try and create the history. And um, we have a lot of folks that either know the, you know, some old-time um, residents of our community that know the history and then other people that are just very curious about our origins. And so we're trying to uh, facilitate that conversation. So more to come. Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, next on our agenda is citizen comments. Um, we do have several folks that have signed up this evening for citizen comments. Um, so this is for people that are wishing to speak to the board. Uh, when you're called upon, we're going to unmute uh, by the moderator. You'll state your name and address. Uh, you'll have three minutes. Make sure that you, uh, they're not legal or personnel in nature. And then while we are listening to the comments this evening, we won't be able to respond um, because it's not on our agenda this evening. So first up, I think we have Jennifer, is it Clubnick? Lori, are you there?
I am. She should be on.
I'm on now. Yes, Clubnick, thank you.
Okay. Then go ahead and state your name and address for us.
Oh, I guess my camera's not on. Sorry about that. Uh, my name is Jennifer Clubnick. My address is one eight three zero seven Southeast Twenty-Fourth Way. I'm in the Clear Meadows neighborhood.
Okay.
Um, and as I stated before, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband about the um, proposed boundary changes that are going to be given to you today, I guess. Um, I'm sure you've seen all of the emails that we've sent, and I apologize for CCing you on that. But I was feeling ignored and I, you know, wanted to make sure we were um, at least being heard. Um, so I guess I'll start. Um, so um, I'd like to point out that two members from that committee were from Fisher's Landing Elementary. And not only were they from Fisher's Landing Elementary, they were from the exact same area. In fact, the same street, I found out. Um, so um, and which is the furthest from Fisher's Landing Elementary. So we find it highly suspect that they chose to cull our neighborhood, which is much closer to Fisher's Landing than their neighborhood. I find that the fact that that happened and the fact that two people from that neighborhood were there is not a coincidence. Um, I don't mean to hurt anybody's feelings, but you know, uh, the fact that there was no representation from any of the other neighborhoods, I find that questionable. Um, we found out that they did not contact Clarissa Hightower during the process to ensure that any changes they made would not affect marginalized children or create a less diverse school um, diversity in our schools. Um, they went against their guiding principles, objective number one, to maintain contin- continuity within a neighborhood. They split half of our neighborhood out of Fisher's Landing. That is clearly breaking up a neighborhood. And the other point, the last one that I'd like to point out, which is the most important, is that they said that they were there to maximize safety. Um, having our safe path with one light, walking from our neighborhood to Fisher's Landing, they are changing it to a school that is across not only one busy street, but two busy streets without a light. So we went from, so they're saying that we need to go from a very safe path to a very unsafe path. And that's to say it lightly. And also, I'd like to mention that part of their boundary proposal is having children from north of Mill Plain go to Ellsworth, which is south of Mill Plain. I don't know if you've ever been on Mill Plain during the hours that school would be picking up, buses would be picking up and school would be starting. But that is an incredibly busy, busy street. In fact, it gets backed up all the way to Leeser, I have seen. And I have heard from many other people that it gets backed up all the way to Leeser. That is not safe. And um, I guess one question was, my husband wanted to know if all of the board members were able to receive his email uh, auditing the committee.
What was his name?
Dean Clubnick.
Yes, I believe we did receive that.
Yeah, I just went to, yeah, I thought it was brilliant. So I just wanted to make sure that y'all had a chance to bask in that brightness because it was clear as day.
Yeah, we got it on the fifth.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Next up is Sarah Moody. Just a minute, please. Okay. And Sarah should be on.
Hello.
Hi, Sarah. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Sarah Moody, five-one-two Beach Street, Vancouver, nine-eight-six-six-one.
Right, thank you.
Um, so I am a teacher at Pacific Middle School. And originally, I planned to speak about the hasty trimester two schedule changes at the secondary level. Uh, but I do appreciate the switch to the semester schedule. Instead, I'd like to remind the school board of a few things as you plan for the remainder of the school year and also make a few requests. Uh, first, I'd like to remind the school board that Clark County is still in the red zone and the spread of COVID continues to rise. Uh, in fact, the rate of confirmed cases is starting to exhibit characteristics of exponential growth, as Superintendent Merlino pointed out earlier. Our area is currently experiencing the worst effects of this pandemic since it began, which makes this a very grave and serious situation. So I'd also like to remind us that we're heading into cold and flu season and upcoming holidays are sure to increase transmission rates further. That being said, I urge the board to lead Evergreen through this pandemic with health and safety as its top, top priority. If the data is telling you that we're not likely to meet the Department of Health metrics required for reopening within the foreseeable future, then please remain pragmatic and make data-driven decisions. Teachers, students, and parents all want school to be back in person, but pushing that too quickly could result in increased sickness and deaths for our community, and it's simply not worth the risk. Second, I've heard a lot of frustration from staff and parents about the lack of transparency and communication around the district's plans for reopening. A prime example is the recent stress that so many teachers, parents, and students experienced because of chatter that our schedules would change after November twentieth. However, none of us knew exactly what those changes were, nor did we have any input regarding this decision. And this is very stressful for staff, students, and parents when we hear talk and rumors about what the district is planning, yet we've been given little to no information. So I ask for transparency and clear, honest, and frequent communication to staff and families regarding the decision-making process for reopening schools in the middle of a deadly pandemic. As key stakeholders in this community, we deserve the opportunity for input when it comes to our own health and safety. Finally, as current trends indicate that it will still be a while until we're back in the moderate zone, is that not an indicator that we should shift focus away from pushing toward a hybrid model and instead try to make our virtual learning environment better for students and teachers? There's great room for improvement and teachers could be much more effective if given proper resources, training, and support to make this a better experience. So my final request for the board and the district is to put more effort toward quality teacher training on remote learning. And this is a challenging time and it is hard for all of us. Uh, we can't just wish this away. So please, I just ask that we are realistic and responsible in order to give our students the best chance to succeed this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next up is uh, Jana White. Janice should be on. Jan, are you with us?
Hello, this is, this is Chris White.
Oh, hello.
Her, her husband, Jan is here, but um, yes, I, I would actually like to, I agree with Sarah. Um, uh, this is a separate bit. Um, so I would like to second that uh, about the challenging students that are, are with the distant learning. But my primary uh, concern and why I was reaching out today is, is to second Jennifer's concern with the uh, Clear Meadows uh, redistricting uh, to Columbia Valley and just the, the potential impact to this neighborhood. As, as a board member of the uh, homeowners association here, we have had a number of complaints and concerns with what the student, the, the, the community uh, impact and even the financial impact to the to the neighborhood and the uh, qual- like the, the desirability of the neighborhood. Um, because a lot of the neighbor, a lot of the folks here who joined or moved here did so specifically to go to Fisher's Landing and um, and paid extra to be able to do that. Because uh, there are concerns, greater concerns, I guess, with um, Evergreen School District as a whole. Because it, um, equity between all the, the schools are very different. You know, you have Fisher's Landing, which is number one thirty-eight wi- in, in the state, to Ilahi, which is three fifty-two. And then you have Columbia Valley, which is where we're proposed to go. And that's ranked six ninety-four um, in the state as far as the quality of, of um, the testing and, and um, you know, so those are some of my concerns, I guess, is, is, and then the distance of, you know, us being um, removed from Fisher's Landing when we have other folks that are, you know, up to four miles away, that are still going to be going to Fisher's Landing. It just seems sort of unfair. Uh, so that's, that's my piece. So.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, next is Elena Bundy.
Elena should be on.
Hello.
Hi, Elena. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Elena Bundy. My address is eighteen two zero seven Southeast Twenty-Fourth Way, Vancouver, nine-eight-six-eight-three.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. When you're ready.
Okay. Um, thank you to the board for giving me the time to speak this evening. I live in the Clear Meadows neighborhood. I believe this elementary time is paramount for these students. Having a sense of a community is a lifelong foundation for their development. I have been to two of the forums to learn about the process on how the decisions have been made about the new elementary boundaries. I appreciate Scott and the parent committee for giving the time to explain the process and answer questions. I feel that moving my neighborhood to, to go to Columbia Valley is not a safe path to commute to. We will, we would have to cross two busy streets, go through a neighborhood that goes to Ilahi, which will have buses going through with no crosswalk to go to Columbia Valley. Right now, we are able to walk or ride our bike to Fisher's Landing at a stoplight and then through the neighborhood. Another worry, I'm sorry, another, another worry I have is the breaking apart the community within our neighborhood. The proposed plan is to take some of Clear Meadows neighborhood. We know three families that just live on the other side of the proposed new boundary. The last worry I have is that we are a device na- diverse neighborhood, and this has not been taken into consideration enough. However, I believe the level trauma can be reduced if students are asked to move from areas of Fisher's Landing that are adjacent to the current boundaries of Columbia Valley and Ellsworth Elementary. One such area around Heritage Park can be added straight into Columbia Valley Zone by merely moving the boundaries south to Thirty-Fourth Street between one sixty-fourth and one seventy-sixth. Half of this neighborhood already goes to Columbia Valley. After-school connections will be easier to maintain and develop as well. So rather than commuting to a school community and living in another, these students will be of one neighborhood school community. I believe this will be true to the next set of students in our neighborhood and not just my kids. and not just my kids or any other at this time. Another section of my concern to me is the neighborhood that was moved from Marin, that is on the south side of Marin border. A neighborhood section was moved to go to Ellsworth. The section neighborhood is now crossing a busy area on Millplain to go to Ellsworth. I feel concerned for this neighborhood, the same as mine. The school boundaries change will be difficult for any neighborhood asked to move. I would like to propose the committee and others making the decision to think about the degree of change in the community we are asking the students to experience to meet the needs of the district. I implore you to take the time to look at some of the boundaries closely as we are asking young children to make the biggest adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. All right, then our final citizen comment this evening that signed up is Bill Bevel.
Just a minute, please.
Okay.
We're having trouble finding Mr. Bevel because he's using an old version of Zoom, according to the moderator.
I see Bill's name on my screen. Does that help?
We're trying to make him a panelist to see if we can get him on.
I'm just kidding.
Oh.
You can ignore me.
I see his name on the panelist.
Okay, so Mr. Bevel should be on as a panelist now unable to speak.
All right, Bill, are you there with us?
Oh, I see him.
He's there.
Bill, are you there?
I can see he's talking, but we can't hear him.
Oh, are you on mute?
No, he's not on mute.
Oh, he's not.
Just a minute. The moderator is going to try to help him.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Bevel. Use the arrow next to the mute button on the bottom left of your screen and make sure you have the correct microphone selected. We're still not hearing you yet. We're still not able to hear you. Another option in that same menu would be to switch to phone audio if you have a phone available.
Okay, how's that? There you are.
I see two phone numbers in the attendees list. I'm not sure which one is yours. I've allowed both to speak.
I'm sorry. I gotta turn off my audio, I think.
Okay, I believe we can hear him.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Bill.
Go ahead, Bill, when you're ready.
I see that you were trying to talk over your phone.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your.
We're not getting the audio, though.
You're not getting it? You can hear me or not?
Now we hear you.
Okay, all right. So my name is Bill Bevel. My address is 1004 Northwest 43rd Street, Vancouver. And I am currently the president of the Evergreen Education Association. I think that by now, I'm hoping that I've developed a reputation as a very reasonable person, a very reasonable man. And we have, through this process, had to work on many issues together. For instance, we're currently working on the workload issues with kindergarten. And I've been able to get good responses and recognition of these workload issues. We recognize that there's an issue there. And we're working together with the district to make sure that those issues are addressed. We had issues around the groups that were coming in to work with small groups and that we felt that those are somewhat inequitable. And using the language of the MOU and using compromise, we were able to find good solutions for that. When looking at issues around school safety, I've been encouraging my members to use the social distancing monitors at each one of their school sites. And we found much success either at the school building or at the district level to make sure that school safety is observed. Recently, we've had pretty bad reliability of technology issues. And once again, I was able to reach out and talk to people in the district who communicated back with me quickly. And those issues are also being addressed, even though there was some lost learning time last week. In special education, I made some requests for additional PPE for sped teachers in very specific situations who felt like their PPE was not sufficient. And instead of having to do a lot of advocacy or pushing, it was met with pretty much instantaneous recognition and making sure that those teachers had what they needed to be safe. When we look at racial and ethnic issues, the equity issues in our district, at first, we had some difficulty with some representation on the equity team. And through compromise and discussion, we were able to not only make sure that there was recognition and there was voice on that team, but we also have invited Ms. Hightower to some of our equity work, our equity team to discuss issues, and that has been going really well. One thing that you should hear a common theme in, and all of these things were able to work out, is good communication. When I reach out about these issues, I almost instantly get acknowledgement and we work towards solutions. But unfortunately, I don't feel like that is the case. We are having a hard time, or the district has, as all schools in the area, are using advice from Dr. Melnick, which we had gone into this believing was pretty good advice, that he is an expert in these areas. But recently, Dr. Melnick is refusing to speak to us as a group and prefers to communicate over email and not really give us any time to actually have discussions about reopening plans. I'm a little bit concerned about the teaching and learning directors in this district. They seem to be hell-bent on making sure that our reopening plan goes forward with or without, looking for loopholes in the MOU and trying to find ways to mandate things that we can often get discussions just by discussing together. And the common theme of the problems that we're having is that we're, where we are communicating, where people are taught, where I am and the district administration is talking to teachers and looking for common solutions, we are finding those solutions and finding the safety and comfort of our teachers so that they feel safe reopening. But where there's a lack of communication, we are having some very significant difficulties in getting to common solutions that work for our students and our staff. One of the things that I think we need to acknowledge is this skyrocketing rate of cases in our area. And just as we have language around what we should do when the numbers go down, how should we reopen schools? I think we need to look at common sense solutions here in our own school district about what we do when the numbers go high. All of the things, all of the documents and references and things that are cited to recommend that schools are safe to reopen are all based on this lowering community spread. Nowhere where community spread is going up are these things trying to be implemented. And a lot of the data is not based on places where community spread are not numbers very high. And so I have real concerns around that. I think that we need to get to some common sense solutions and use what we know about the data, about the science, about the recommendations to make good decisions for kids. At the end of this, I feel personally responsible and my members feel responsible to each other to make sure that there are no students who suffer from this or staff that suffer from this disease, that we need to go beyond just regular key protocols to the other place where we actually are preventing people from catching this and not just depending on plans for what we do once they do. In the long run, I just believe that open communication is the way that we get through this. We need to feel together and collaborative and working together. And where we are being reached out to, we are stepping up and responding, and that will continue to happen. But when we get shut down, when we get ignored, when we aren't getting our voices heard, I think that that's going to be a true issue. And I'm sorry if I went a little over time with all of the technical problems here, but I appreciate you hearing me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Next up is the budget update. So I turn it back over to Superintendent Merlino for a budget update.
Yes. I will start with last year. And I've shared this a number of times already. We were expecting last year to have a little bit of a decrease in our fund balance from roughly 23.2 million to maybe 22, 22 and a half as a response to some of the cuts that we had made when I first was put into the position. Then, as I've been saying for months, there were some impacts that helped us increase our fund balance last year because of the closure. And I've identified the various reasons that that occurred. So we ended up the 1920 school year with a little over 27 million, about 27.2 million. That was actually, our actual ending fund balance was about 28.2 million. Included in that 28.2 million was $1 million of ESER funds, the CARES money that we claimed last year. This is something that you've been hearing, I know Rob's been hearing anyway, through his legislative committee work, that not a lot of districts have started claiming those funds yet. We claimed about a million of that last year. So our 28.2 million was inflated by $1 million, but we ended up actually adding about $4 million to the fund balance. And what I've been talking about all along is that those, any increase that we had in the fund balance would help us as we started to navigate the 2021 school year because obviously, we've got a number of issues in 2021 with respect to enrollment impacts. I really quickly want to also, Joe, though, mention, as we come into 2021, we, I think this month, have claimed an additional 1.9 million. So we've claimed about almost $3 million of the 4.9 million in ESER or CARES funds that we were expecting to receive and will. We'll claim the remaining 1.9 million in subsequent months. But one of the things that the legislative staff and others have been critical of school districts is for not claiming those funds because their belief that if districts are having issues with fund balance or they're having issues with, excuse me, enrollment declines, they should be claiming the funds. Well, I'm just reporting to you that we're actually doing that. What we will be spending those funds on are PPE that we've had throughout the pandemic device costs. We had to buy some additional devices in the summer of 20. Furlough, medical costs associated with furloughing a number of our employees and then the increase in unemployment costs. Those will be the main areas that we end up spending those ESER funds or CARES funds on. So we come into the year with a little more than, you know, we had budgeted for the full ESER CARES money in 2021. So if you take that out of the 28, we came in with about $4 million, four, five million more than we had expected. Thus far, you know, you've heard me talk about enrollment impacts. We reported our November enrollment. In November of 19, we had 24,704 full-time equivalent students. In November of 20, we have 23,289 students. So almost a little more than 1,400. I guess that's 1,415 less students. And we had expected about a 2.3% drop. That's about a 5.7% drop that we've actually seen. So we're bracing for an approximate eight-ish million-dollar reduction just in our apportionment funds. You've heard me talk a lot about transportation. Throughout, our first count was October. Normally, we count about 20,000 kids in our transportation count. We counted 950. This year, that 950 is significantly more than, I think, most districts in the area. Not that this is a financial issue. I think the fact that we're serving as many kids as we're serving is actually a testament to the staff that we have in the district and the effort that's being brought forth for our children and the kids and the students in our school district. But where I was thinking we maybe would potentially lose maybe 3, 4 million in transportation, the way transportation funding works is there's three counts during a school year. One of those three, as we understand it, is being held harmless. So the spring count from last year would have counted for this year's funding. That spring count, our understanding is that they're giving us the students that they projected for us to transport. But the fall and winter counts for this year are not based upon a projection. They're based upon what the actual transportation is. With that in mind, the fact that we're at 900-ish, 950, as opposed to the 20,000. And honestly, with the window, the second window probably is in that range of time where cases are. I think there's a really strong chance that we'll still be in remote learning at that time. I'm becoming concerned that we could maybe lose as much as 6, 7, 8 million in transportation, which is a significant number. We've also talked about the impact on special ed because special ed funding is capped at 13.5% of your basic education enrollment, expecting a million-plus reduction in special ed. So I don't think the news is great on the revenue front. Matter of fact, I don't think, and I know it's not great on the revenue front. We, as you're all very well aware of, reacted with furloughs of classified staff. Our secretarial staff has been reduced in half and they entered into the Workcare, I think it's called, program, where they receive some unemployment for the hours that they're not here through the federal government. But one of the difficulties is that estimating this year is going to be more difficult because we don't necessarily know when kids are coming back. And so you're kind of estimating, at what point in time are we thinking the staff comes back? And how do we build those in? I'm just raising this. I started to do some projections for this year. And I think we will very likely see a pretty significant reduction in fund balance from the 28 million that we're looking at. And each month, obviously, we get a little clearer picture on both sides. What we don't know of on the revenue side, per today on the statewide call from the OSPI, that OSPI at least is putting in a request for hold harmless in all transportation funds. So more like whatever we received this last year, that what they're looking at is the state had allocated a figure for the biennium for transportation. They're asking the legislature to allow them to distribute all of those funds rather than the funds generated by the formulas. Now, the legislature has at last count about a $4.5 billion shortfall that they'll be dealing with over the next, basically, two and a half years. So when we had conversations, I participated with superintendents from around the state in calls, with Zoom calls, with the Speaker of the House, Speaker Jenkins. I have conversations literally almost every week with Representative Stonier, Representative Harris, have been able to access Senator Billig, the majority leader in the Senate. And the messages that we get from the House is that their education's got their money previously. And there are other advocates that they believe they need the money more than we need the money for transportation. So you don't get a good message from the House of Representatives in the state. On the Senate side, what you hear is if there's any more stimulus money that comes from the federal government, that's going to come to help offset the shortfall at the state level rather than be distributed to schools. If we do receive, and I assume we will at some point, receive a stimulus package, another stimulus package that would send money to states. The question would be, whatever sent to states, is it going to be retained at the state level or distributed down? So on the one chamber of the House, you hear schools have got their money from the state. In the Senate, you hear. On the, in the Senate, you hear, well, we need that money to balance the state's budget, because we may not have the votes to pass a tax increase or what have you. And, and so my concern is that we may not receive any help in a very difficult situation. And I'm not getting into specific numbers right now, but I'm just wanting to let you know as early as possible that, that this is the case. And I don't believe it's a one-year thing. I believe that the conversations this winter and spring for next year are going to be difficult conversations, because one of the things I had mentioned earlier was our, our fund balance. I, you know, if you compare our fund balance in Evergreen, one of the larger districts in the state, to other large districts in the state, our fund balance isn't a large fund balance. We, as a district, we certainly have maintained the board's five percent reserve to make sure that we do have the ability to have funds in a rainy day. This is obviously a rainy day type of situation. But you get that fund balance too low, you, you have a hard time even cash flow-wise to not have to borrow money on a monthly basis to make all of your payments. And we've never, we've never run the district as a bank. It's not like we're here to collect tax money from local taxpayers so that we can build a big reserve. We spend the money in our schools. I think we've illustrated that repeatedly over the last at least fifteen years. When you compare our, the way we spend money at Evergreen to the way money is spent, particularly in other large districts in the state. So I just raised this, because I think we're probably going to have some very difficult decisions ahead of us. And we've always tried to be very transparent. I believe Bill referred to transparency and communication. I like to make sure that everyone knows that I'm communicating and being transparent, that we do have impacts from the pandemic that likely we will have to work through and we will work through as a community as we do that. So that's, I guess, what I would say about the current year. As we hit to November, we hit to December, we have better estimates. Then I'll start bringing actual numbers forward in terms of what I'm thinking. And, and I'll leave it at that. The, the one thing I will say, and I've, I've already shared this in messages to the board, but we did have an extremely successful bond sale last week. That was a competitive bid bond sale, two-hundred-seventy-five million dollars for the bond project's largest competitive bid in the country last week. I think at a two-point-four percent average true interest cost over the life of the eighteen years. So that's great for the taxpayers. We're able to meet what we've said on the bond project in terms of delivering all the projects we said we would deliver. We were able to deliver the tax rate that we have promised the voters. And I would say, more importantly than anything else, is the buildings that we have. And kids will be in those buildings, and our staff will be in those buildings. And it's coming closer every day. We're getting closer. Those buildings are beautiful and are receiving very positive reviews. Mountain View is coming out of the ground. That's going to be a great facility. Hollingsworth Academy Legacy is beautiful. If you drive by that campus transitions. Y East is flat, ready to go as soon as we move forward on that project. Not the school. The school is intact, but the property is flat and ready to start building alongside Y East. Ellsworth and Marion, I drive by Marion literally every day, get to see that growing. We, we've got really good days ahead of us. There's no question about it. We're going to have some tough times for a little bit. We'll figure that out. We've done it before, and we'll do it again. So that's my report.
Thanks, Mike. Is the, is the ESD going to do their listening tour again this year with the legislators?
Yeah, I believe that that's scheduled. I've got the date. Let me look it up real quick, because I just got invited to a Zoom meeting. I think it's a Zoom thing, and it might be December fourth. Hold on a sec. Let me see if I can see it. You know what? It's December fourth. December fourth at ten o'clock AM. ESD Legislative Forum.
So will it just be them doing their Zoom panel, and then people being able to listen in? Is that kind of how it's going to work?
Yeah, my guess is that it'll probably be, we'll send a link out, and they'll all be Zooming, and then they'll kind of moderate it, and we'll be as effective in that as Zoom as we were today. And, and we'll, we'll bring people in on different topics. That's my understanding. Honestly, because we haven't been able to meet as a group of superintendents. I honestly, I just know that I was invited, I believe. I'm going to be talking a little about some of the financial impacts on school districts on that. But I, there hasn't been a lot of conversations. My sense would be, it'll be like this. It'll be broadcast, and people will get a link and have an opportunity to participate that way.
Okay.
And I didn't mention in the, in the superintendent report that they've extended the, the board meeting restrictions through December seventh. So this will continue, I guess, December seventh, our next, I don't know what date our next board meeting is. Is it the tenth? I think it's the tenth.
It's the eighth.
I think it's the eighth. I'm pretty sure it's the eighth. Yeah, it looks like it's the eighth. So we'll see if they extend it again. My guess is they will extend it again as cases are increasing.
Okay.
That's it.
Victoria, you're muted.
Victoria, did you have something?
I'm trying to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, it's very frustrating, because we, they keep preventing us from meeting. I, I'm trying to figure out, we, I think we're within the guidelines if we meet. We have, you know, social distancing, and then we be on Zoom so that the public can participate via Zoom. So at least we're there together. I, I think our meetings are more dynamic that way. I think that as they get as dynamic as they'll be in, in our meetings. But I, I just, I have to tell you, I just am not on board with the fact that we're kept from meeting as we're doing some of these hybrid, you know, changes. I just, I don't like it. I just, I'm going on record to say I don't like it.
Are there any exceptions to the, the new, the new, I guess, act that came out today or ruling?
This, they haven't published the details. They've just said it's extended, and we'll tell you later.
And what would they do if we did something different, stayed within the state guidelines? But, I mean, throw us in jail?
It would be a violation of OPMA, so.
But we'd actually be in open, we'd be more open. We'd still be going by Zoom. I mean, it won't, for the community.
So the actual OMP, OPMA actually states that we are not allowed to meet.
Yeah, I asked Paul Clay this question, if we were to meet anyway, and I think he said that it could be fines, and it could be, could be that we get to choose who would be arrested and put in jail. And so, but it would need to be an open public meeting where we would have the vote for the community to be able to see.
But do you, does everybody agree? There's a hypocrisy here?
Yes, I completely agree. And it's very frustrating.
I don't like being a rule breaker, but I sure as heck can't stand what we're, I just, it feels like we're being, you know, handcuffed from doing our work and be, I mean, I feel comfortable in our schools when, you know, when I'm there, you know, with our masks and, you know, all the precautions that have been in place. I don't have a fear of being in a boardroom with you guys, six sitting six feet apart with our masks on, and having our laptops in front of us, and have our Zoom going, and still have the public engaged. But I don't know. It just feels wrong.
I agree. We're still been on by the governor's order, though. I'm, just like Mike said, I don't want to have to choose who goes to jail. And so here we are. I'm myself also getting very tired of Brady Bunch Squares, and everybody turned into Flat Stanley, if you've ever read that book.
It, it seems if we weren't a school board, the six of us could go out and have a beer at ten-thirty at night over great grains of wrath, if we chose to do that, or at the Pacific House. But since we're a board member, we can't do that. Since we're a board, we can't do that. So I, I kind of agree with the hypocrisy. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. If we just ran into each other and ended up at a table at a restaurant, that would be okay, but we couldn't have a public meeting.
Yeah.
But what do I know? I don't know anything.
Well, I just had an urge to just speak that, because it's just driving me nuts. I just can't, I just don't like it. Maybe I'll have to call my contact in the governor's office and get it a little birdie in there, his ear.
Well, maybe there'll be some changes to the, to this go-round. I don't know if there will be, but I guess it's worth looking at when it comes out later, as Rob stated.
They haven't made any changes in the last three, four go- rounds. Except to say that when a county reaches phase three, then groups of up to ten could meet. And that would be enough to put the board and its support, some of its support people in the same room, but not a full cabinet, not the way we're used to it when a, when a board meeting is lightly attended. So, and even then, we would still have to be using Zoom so that others could dial in and participate the way that we have been before. But yeah, I totally feel that need to be in person and, you know, hope that everybody around us will do what's necessary to tamp down the pandemic and get us returning to normal faster. Of course, now I've gone, led us straight into board comments, haven't I, Julie?
Well, I was going to say that I think we were led right into board comments, so.
Thanks, Mike, for helping me get on that tangent.
There you go.
All right, any other board comments?
Yeah, I wanted to point out that WASTA has this, the Strategic Advocacy Team has two remaining listening sessions with the House Education Committee. They're on the twelfth and the nineteenth of November. So if we can't make December fourth to hear the superintendent speak and listen, then there's two opportunities to speak to the, at least the House Education Committee, which I think has some area members on it. I don't remember who, and they might have changed it since then, but they are November twelfth, four-thirty to six. November nineteenth, four-thirty to six, over Zoom. So even they have to abide by the OPMA restrictions. I wanted to just take a moment and recognize, where did it go? Recognize the loss of Kevin Peterson, Jr., who was shot late October. Mike texted us to mention that he was a Union graduate, and I always answer that question, what's the toughest thing about this work? And it's experiencing the loss of a student. I just wanted to say that I kind of experienced the loss of a graduate in just about the same measure. It's never, it's never easy to get news like that. And I wanted to publicly offer my condolences to his family and to those who feel that loss as intensely as I know they must. I don't know the full circumstances, and I don't think the investigations are finished, but it's still a loss. And I want to take a chance and acknowledge that here, kind of quasi-officially, at least in my own voice. I'm sorry, he's gone.
It's a sad, it's a very sad situation. I'm very curious about the full details. It's, it's a challenging situation for sure, and it's heartbreaking.
It's a great way to put it. Just trying to think if there was anything else. The conference is coming up next week, the WASTA Conference. It'll be as virtual as this. And wanted to make sure folks were aware that I think three positions in WASTA are going to be voted on, Legislative Committee, and I was on the phone with Monty Anderson. He won't be running for the board position, the DA six board position. And so if there's an interest, probably I'd have some discussions. Then aside, I was just really looking forward to the Y East groundbreaking. And grateful for the news that's proceeding pace.
This coming Saturday evening is the Evergreen School District Foundation Gala. Virtual, so.
It's free to attend?
I'd really like to encourage people to spread the word and to, on Facebook, pass, you know, share their postings so that more of our parents can come, because I think they really enjoy it. I may not be there. I'm moving that day. I'm moving Friday and Saturday. So if I've got myself together and can be on there, I will. But I did film a video for the event. So that at least will be there, but I'm going to try. I feel really bad about it.
All you need is that selfie stick, and then you can just, you can attend it anywhere. You don't even have to be somewhere. You can be anywhere and attend the gala.
And no one will care if I'm all sweaty and grungy looking?
Well, I don't think anybody will really see us, right? Have they even been able to see us?
Probably not.
No, I don't think they can see us. I think it's we see them, they don't see us.
We.
You don't even have, you don't have to use the strapping tape on your phone. You'd be fine.
I don't know. I might be putting the strapping tape. Who knows what, where I'll be? Well, I'm going to do everything I can to be there, because I really want to be supportive to the foundation. They're doing, they're doing a good job.
Well, their silent auction is already open and live, so they're taking bids. They're, I heard they did the run a show, and it's doing really well. That was actually my board comment as well. I had let Rebecca know that I would mention it to everybody and make sure that everybody signed up, and to remind you that it is free to attend. You do not have to pay to attend, so go sign up.
Where's the silent auction stuff? Do you have to sign up before you can see that?
Yeah, they send you a link once you sign up.
You got some really good stuff. I was reviewing it for her.
You'd have already got an email, Rob, I think.
I.
It's a personal link with your information from their auction system. So you have to register in order to get access to the silent auction.
Yeah.
And every ticket, every ticket purchased is entered into a drawing as well. Not purchased, every person registered. I guess you don't purchase them. They're free.
I got the page up here, so I'll just get it done.
All right, anything else? I know we have our equity part of the conference next week, is we have a half-day equity pre-conference that I think all of us are registered for.
The eighteenth, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all of us.
So that'll be good.
Do we know if that one's going to be recorded for viewing afterwards as well? I like you.
I think a conference, well, maybe you'd know this better.
I should know this stuff, huh?
I think I heard them talking about it in the WASTA Thursday calls, that they're keeping recordings of the meeting proceedings alive for at least a while. Yeah.
It's like, I think, six months, but they'll all be available to view. I can't remember. But I can't remember if that includes the early birds. So, um, all right, I'll find out. Thank you.
Like, yeah, I've been taking notes and sending them all to you about the WASTA COVID calls and the state updates and things. Felt like that was part of what I had to give. There aren't going to be any calls during the conference week or the, or the Thanksgiving break. So that we'll have two weeks off of that, and then they'll come back on the third. And I wonder whether or not they're going to, whether or not they're going to move to maybe more of a bi-weekly or less often, as the speed of the news dissipates. But then again, I don't know if the speed of the news is going to dissipate.
Well, I appreciate the, the updates, Rob. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so there'll be one out on the 12th and then it'll feel like a lot less to do.
Okay, anything else? Next on the agenda is future agenda items. I believe that we might come up with some stuff from uh, next week's conference, so.
Will, might be nice to hear a report from Mike in the Cabinet about how uh, the technology and the remote learning is going. Here are summaries of what's been difficult and how they've corrected or mitigated that. And what remains difficult, what training might be needed. Since we build the budget up for next year, um, I'm sure there are elements of technology that will pop up for people that they want to keep and might be good to hear about that uh, from some people when the time is right.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, anything else? If not, we'll move on to um, go into a short recess, then we will come back for a board workshop uh, where we will have Elementary Boundary Review Committee. Um, we'll present some boundary changes proposal. Uh, we'll have an equity inclusion update. We'll get a legislative update. Um, another superintendent's update and a board meeting debrief. So let's take a short uh, few minute break and then we'll reconvene. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, are we ready? Are we turning this over to Scott to lead us through this?
We are.
Hi, Scott.
Hi Julie, hi everybody. Thanks for having us. So uh, so I'm joined today as well uh, by four of the members of our parent committee um, that are on the call with us and we're very lucky to have them. So we have you know, arranged a presentation for you all that uh, all start us off and finish us off and the bulk of the conversation and what's shared will come directly from uh, parents on the committee. Um, I think you all know that uh, you know, the, while a slide deck that we're about to go through obviously is, is shared in a linear fashion, the work does not always proceed in a linear fashion. And so we'll do our best to put all the pieces together um, as we go through things. So um, I know that Lori loaded up for you all. Uh, not only the slide deck, for those of you that wanted to take a look at it ahead of time, uh, but also a summary sheet um, of feedback received and that included um, all of the alternate proposals that we've received and that the parent committee vetted. And then there were a couple of attachments in there as well. Um, probably 80, maybe 100 pages of uh, emails received uh, you know, by me via the attendance line and uh, my replies and all of that. So I know that you have all those things and, and it sounds like some other things as well that came directly to you. So uh, there's a lot to go through, so. But like I said a minute ago, you know, I'll kick us off and then I'll turn it over to Alicia and Shelley. And then following that, um, they will turn it over to Adrian and Holly. And at the times that they're sharing, my job will be to listen to their cues and to tell me when to click to the next slide, so. Um, you know, that'll be part of this as well. So, and again, thanks for having us. So. The work of the parent committee, and so this really is, you know, an overview for you all. I know you know some of this, uh, might not know some of it. You know, based on how things proceeded. So just to make sure we're all on the same page, uh, the committee was initially formed uh, last November. Um, and our first meeting was in December. Um, I reached out to the principals of the five schools that were initially envisioned to be part of this Phase Two work. Uh, those schools being Riverview, Fisher's Landing, Furcrest, and of course Ellsworth and Marion, because those are the two schools in this Phase Two that are being rebuilt, as uh, Mike mentioned before, and thus have uh, different uh, capacity for students um, than their uh, previous schools will when they open. And uh, the committee initially on paper at least had, had nine people on the committee representing those five schools. Um, and some of this information that I'm sharing, you know, it's not new information for me, but it's information um, remembered really and gleaned from going back and looking at document history to try to piece together, you know, the path of how this came about. And that comes largely uh, because a lot of questions have come our way or my way with regard to how the committee was formed. And so we had nine representatives on paper that were invited to that first meeting in December. Uh, we had six representatives, parent representatives that showed up at that meeting. Unfortunately, the six of them collectively did represent uh, all five of those schools that I mentioned before. Um, and, and then we had in that uh, first month, uh, you know, just a little bit of shifting of the committee because two of the folks um, who had agreed with their principals to do it, uh, never showed up and then dropped out. And then one person attended one meeting and then had to drop out. Um, and then Judy added one more representative from Fisher's. And so the bulk of the work that you see there in that December 2019 to March 2020 timeline uh, was done by a group of seven parents with me facilitating, just as I did along with Matt Handelman in Phase One. Um, and so just as you know, as part of the work, we first uh, put together our group norms to make sure that we could work uh, collectively very well together and that all voices were heard and to make sure that again, the parents collectively were looking out for what I would call the good of the entire district and not um, you know, their own school or their own neighborhood or what have you. Um, proved to be just like in Phase One, a great group of parents to work with. Um, and so I'll get to the guiding principles in just a moment on the next slide, but we met in person um, for five times in that timeframe that you see there. And then our school buildings closed and we were in the midst of uh, COVID, or at least COVID was starting. And so we did the last part of the work um, via phone and email and just did what we needed to do to arrive at our initial recommendations. Um, and then we paused the work. Um, you know, Mike and I talked and my recommendation at that time was um, instead of holding community forums right now in May and doing those virtually, um, let's wait until the fall in the hopes that we can do both community forums and then of course, the board meetings that follow uh, in person. Uh, that was our hope. Clearly, it didn't work out that way. So we moved forth with uh, virtual community forums, um, which just concluded um, a little bit over a week ago or, you know, 10 days ago or something like that. Um, and it's worth noting that um, one of those uh, virtual community forums was um, entirely Spanish speaking, or at least it was translated in Spanish. Um, you know, my talking and Adrian Garcia translating that. Um, and uh, it was a great event. It was mostly Marion parents that were at that. Um, but we were able to uh, meet the needs of those folks as well and got some very good feedback and, and some great questions that we were able to answer. Um, and it's also worth noting, you know, that uh, you know, as I'm sure you guys know and often talk about, um, even in the midst of all of the challenges that we and everybody in our community is facing due to the pandemic, uh, there are positives that come out of that, when you look for them. And so one of the positives in my view as it relates to this process was that perhaps because the community forums needed to be held virtually, uh, they were very well attended as compared to the in-person ones that were part of Phase One. Um, and uh, and so that's a real positive thing. And so you know, already, you know, thinking ahead to Phase Three when uh, Burton is rebuilt and we do another section of the work um, and certainly hoping that uh, the pandemic is behind us by then, there is likely still going to be a place for um, at least some of the community forums to be virtual because it clearly worked out well for parents to be able to attend those. So so we did that. Um, and then we met again as a group and this time, um, you know, because the group had, had shrunk and it was, you know, four working folks and myself, we all agreed to uh, meet and separate and we met together, considered all the feedback, examined alternate proposals received and are here tonight to present um, our recommendations to you all. So these guiding principles that are up uh, probably look relatively familiar to you, not only because of course, we vetted them with you all back when the work was starting and when they were written, but also because they are very similar to the guiding principles that were designed and then board approved by the first parent committee in Phase One of the work when Emerald was built. Um, and so you know, the difference here really between Phase One and Phase Two is that um, like the Phase One group, um, it was very important to this group of parents that they don't do anything to create additional patchwork quilt neighborhoods, which is the, are the sections that are completely separated from the main area around the school. Uh, but the difference here is that the work um, included possibly looking to see if we could recommend to eliminate current areas of patchwork quilting, because unlike the first round, um, there are right now some areas of quilting um, over in the, on the west side of the district. And you'll see those when the parents uh, get to that and you see the maps that are about to come up. And so hopefully, most of this looks very familiar to you. And I'll cover a little bit more detail in my part toward the end um, about some of these guiding principles, um, you know, specifically guiding principles two and five, based on feedback and questions that we've received. So right before um, the parents take over, uh, this is just a bird's eye view of the entire district, so nothing that you haven't seen before or aren't familiar with. You can see over here on the right, uh, the pink there, that's the new Emerald Zone, you know, the work that um, was done in Phase One. And then over here, and I know that the parents on the committee will get into more detail when we get there, but you can see over here, those patchwork quilt areas that currently exist that um, I referenced before. And so this green area where my cursor is um, is right now and has been for a very long time, part of the Ellsworth Attendance Zone. And Ellsworth is down here, of course. And then this section in between that area and Marion, this is a section of quilting for Furcrest Elementary, which is here. So I'll click to the next slide and here's where we turn it over. Um, or I turn it over to Alicia and Shelley. And so Alicia and Shelley, however you guys have this organized, um, you guys take it away. And if one of you, when it's time to go to the next slide, could just speak out and let me know that, I'll do that.
Uh, thank you, Scott. Um, so I, my name is Alicia Dittman and I am the representative parent for Riverview Elementary School. And um, so, excuse me. Um, so what I want to kind of piggyback off of what Scott said, um, I believe all of us or everyone that had started on the committee.
Is there a technical glitch?
I know that the reason why they chose us is because they felt that we would have an unbiased objective, objective and to work to ensure the equitable decisions that we had to make.
The, the audio is fading, is switching in and out.
We had to remove at least uh, 50 schools, uh, 50 students from Fisher's Landing because of new development in the area. Um, and our goal was to um, affect as less families as possible um, at a district level. We were given obviously tools and maps to be able to perform our duties and make our just tough decisions um, and the changes that we did. Um, and also um, taken to travel time for students and as well as safety. Um, and so with that, um, we looked at moving students from the south side of the 14, um, but there were not enough students. That would be great. And anyways, um, so um, there were no close schools that would make these moves possible. Um, and rezonia issues of the school um, and just the right um, size schools as well. So Riverview um, in the end was considered just the right size. Uh, so students um, that would have to be moved from Riverview to accommodate the Fisher's Landing students affecting more students. And we looked at that and making those changes um, and just felt that Riverview wasn't a good fit uh, for that um, at this time. Shelley?
Thank you, Alicia. Um, so as Alicia said, it was our mandate to um, eliminate 50 students from Fisher's Landing. And so with that, like she said, we did consider the lower boundary. And as you can see, we were given tools that are not necessarily available to the general public um, that we are able to see the number of students in each area. So as you can see from that low um, section, there is a very small amount of individuals. Additionally, when we considered this area, we had to look at drive time, like Alicia said. Um, and if we were actually to consider either one of those, um, to go into the, any of the other schools, it would actually cause longer drive times for those said students. And it would actually require us to move students from another area anyway. So it was not something that we were comfortable with because we would end up affecting so many different students. Um, excuse me, I have notes, so I can make sure I cover everything for everybody. One of the other chan- challenges that we actually faced is that Fisher's Landing, as well as Marion, um, both have natural and district boundaries that we had to be very mindful of because we can't change those things. Um, and so we had to think, hey, what can we do that'll, in the small options that we seemingly have, because we don't have a lot of schools that we can progress to. We also had to avoid, um, as Scott said, um, patchworking. I want to specify what's patchworking is because I think some of the um, parents had a misunderstanding of that when we were giving that said presentation. And I know you all know what it is, but I would like for them also to have that information. So the, we don't want to create a patchwork, which means that there's an area that is completely separate from where the other school is. Not that you have to go, that it looks a little wonky, but that specifically you're going through another district, which would not, you know, to get to a school. And again, that was very hard considering there were natural boundaries. And also like Alicia said, we had to look at everything as a whole versus just one small piece at a time. Um, okay, so with that, because we knew we couldn't move that bottom section and we knew that there were so few schools that were surrounding Fisher, Fisher's Landing, we had to include Columbia Valley because it was either Riverview, which has a natural barrier with 164, thank you, Scott. Um, or, and if you can go to the next one, actually. Scott, if you could go to the next slide for me, I'm, I apologize. So we had to either consider, as you can see here, it's either Columbia, it's Columbia Valley, Riverview and and Ilahi. Ilahi um, was not allowed to be considered because um, it's involved, because it was already involved in the first one. So was technically Columbia, well, Columbia Valley was not supposed to be touched, but we knew there was nothing else that we could do except for to consider Columbia Valley, because that was the most adjacent school. So when we looked at this, we were very much so aware that we would be affecting families. We So when we looked at this, we were very much so aware that we would be affecting families, we would be affecting students and there would be some major issues. So we took into great consideration the socioeconomic, the diversity as well as like everybody said, drive time, how this was affect special needs. You know, DI. So we took everything into consideration because we knew what a big task we were taking on. So when we considered, when we saw that we needed to use Columbia Valley, we requested Scott speak directly to you all as the as the board to allow us to be able to do that so that we could affect as few families as possible because there is a patch, as you can see in, there's a patch that is Columbia Valley that is actually closer to, Scott, can you remind me again what? Thank you. And so in Furcrest, so we knew that if we were able to, and the number was, the number was great. We also looked at the different neighborhoods and how those different neighborhoods would be affected. We wanted to make sure because we knew funding was specifically regarding the lower income levels, we needed to make sure that we would not be affecting that. We knew that you know, being, I'm at Marion, oh, I forgot to say that. I'm the Marion representative. And so being that, that being with that, I also do very much so know how and we all were aware of how much that financial assistance from depends upon your enrollment and the needs of your students and higher need schools end up getting larger grants to help said students. So we took that into consideration as well in deciding which areas we would move. We did not want to negatively affect funding for schools, if that makes sense. And since we had to move at least fifty students, we looked at different neighborhoods and one of the neighborhoods that we did look at was Clear Meadow. Thank you, Scott. Within Clear Meadow, you can actually see there's a natural boundary. And we were like, okay, cool. This is perfect because the numbers match. We need to move fifty students. We can pull the pocket from the north side, the northwest side of Columbia Valley, put that over into the other school and we can then move Clear Meadows into Columbia Valley. Because our issue is not with adding students to Columbia Valley, but taking students out of Fisher's Landing because we knew that there was going to be new apartments that are going to be built creating more students than we have capacity for at the current time and in the projections. Excuse me, I have to go and reference my, it's a little good. So with that, you know, we presented it and we had our forums. And since the numbers matched, we were very happy with that. When we had our forums, we did get a lot of feedback from the Columbia Valley community saying that they were not pleased with our findings and our recommendation. And we understand that it's very hard, but it was also very hard to try and make these decisions. So that's okay. I would like to address some of those questions. One of the things that was suggested was that we moved to Columbia, we moved Summers Walk, but that is located in Ilahi and Ilahi is considered right sized, so we had no need to be able to affect them. Also, Ilahi was not part of our schools that we were working with and we knew since there was already a segment of Columbia Valley that was connected to Fisher's Landing, it would not create more patchwork and would also very much so be able to right-size all of the different schools. Okay, so and that again addresses the patchwork and I addressed to the funding. Also, we found out through our parental forum, with our parent forums that in Clear Meadows, half of the neighborhood is on an HOA, half is not. That was not something we were made aware of, but because we saw the natural boundaries that were existing within this neighborhood, we considered it viable. We were informed that the neighborhood that was moved to Columbia Valley is the HOA neighborhood, but the one that's staying in Fisher's Landing is not. So we took that in consideration and when we all sat down and we met, we also took into consideration drive times as well as driving routes. We consulted transportation as well as going ourselves personally to the different neighborhoods to collect drive time data so that we could make sure that we were doing, that we were looking at all aspects and all different areas of the issues that potentially this could cause because again, students are the most important thing in this situation. So what we found was that within the Columbia Valley neighborhood, or excuse me, within the
River Meadows neighborhood.
Thank you. Clear Meadows neighborhood. It was actually a closer distance driving to Columbia Valley than it is to Fisher's School. There was questions being brought up about the streets and this is actually a bust neighborhood, as I'm sure you all as a board know. So we were not considering walking because by district standards, that is not a walking zone and it is not safe actually to walk because it is so far. That is by guidelines of the district. So we did take that into consideration. The other thing that we wanted to look at, when after we got all of those presentations and all of the comments and communication from the parents was, okay, there was a concern about the neighborhood being split up. And so what we did is we looked at it and we said, okay, well, what if we add the entire neighborhood to Columbia Valley? Well, we looked at that, but there was not a viable option to re-add those students back into Fisher's and it would overload Columbia Valley. So we even considered taking an apartment complex so that we could actually maintain the numbers and it was just too large. Additionally, one of the other concerns that was brought up was our, was the equity equitability of our decision and whether or not we took into the fact of the financial diversity or ethical ethnic diversity of said neighborhoods. Which was actually something we very much so wanted to make sure of that we did correctly. So we intentionally did not take the large apartment complex that was, that is in Fisher's and move it because we understood that that could greatly affect those students in a very negative way. Additionally, we weren't able to take the students that were in the apartment complexes from Columbia Valley because that would also negatively financially affect the school's abilities to fund certain programs. So with all of that said, we also did, Scott did, it was brought up and questioned if we would be able to be in contact with Mrs. Hightower regarding our decisions and regarding our moves. And so Scott, after that meeting, did one hundred percent go and speak to Ms. Hightower and ask her her thoughts. And my understanding was that we were making, though it was a very hard decision, we were making an ethical decision. So ladies, I'm going to pass it off to you for the west side.
Okay, thanks very much, Shelley. And before we do that, and I know that we had some technical glitches with when Alicia was up there. So, so let me just go backwards real quick. Just to make sure that I briefly capture that for the benefit of the board. So yeah, so as was mentioned, and some of this, of course, will be a repeat for folks. You know, the first area of the current Fisher's attendance zone that we looked at was this one, the Evergreen Highway area with the thinking that it might be possible to either move that to Ellsworth, which you can see over here on the left side of the screen in the green, or possibly move it to River View, which is why River View is selected to be part of this. Because that would be closer. So we ran into a couple of challenges based on the work and one of those I Alicia mentioned was purely the number of students that live here. The other was the drive time from a transportation, from a busing perspective, if you're talking about the east side of this and how long in reality it takes to get down Evergreen Highway and do the stops and then get up to either River View or Ellsworth. So we kept looking at that. And then the other challenge that we ran into, you know, as far as the work is concerned, is that we knew or discovered that if we move students from Fisher's in that Evergreen Highway area into River View, that River View is already a right-sized elementary school based on our work with facilities and with Sue. So we knew if we move fifty kiddos in, we need to figure out a way to move roughly fifty kiddos out. And that was the challenge because as you can see from this image, the bulk of the students who attend River View live on the east side of the school, not the west side. And so in order to do that without creating any patchwork quoting, we would have had to involve Crestline, which is also a right-sized school. And so ultimately, we set that aside and started looking elsewhere, which is where we came to this section of Fisher's that Shelley talked about. And so you know, as was mentioned, the committee came to me and asked about involving Columbia Valley. And I knew that, and I told them that Columbia Valley was envisioned to be part of the phase three work because we knew as a district that we wanted to eventually see if we could address that patchwork quiltery. And so a conversation was had you know, at the district level with Mike and I, and I think Sue was involved in that. And then after that with the board in terms of of doing that. And you guys, the board members can see and have been made aware, both in the feedback we've gotten and also in that summary document that I gave, that you know, we've gotten some feedback from some Columbia Valley folks that in a nutshell is saying, hey, we, we agree, this kind of makes sense, even though we're not happy about it, but we think we should have been part of the conversation. And that, of course, is a theme that has arisen with a lot of the parents in Clear Meadows as well because they would have liked to have been added to the committee at a later phase of the work, once their neighborhood was being considered. The last thing I'd say here, just to wrap this section up, is that you know, here you can see the apart where my cursor is down here, you can see the apartment complex that Shelley mentioned. And so that's the one that she was speaking of, that the one large one that's in Columbia Valley and then this one large one that's in Fisher's and that's the only large apartment complex that is currently in the Fisher's Landing zone. And so the committee, you know, did not really want to move that, given that that was the only one there. Okay. And there you can see this, I didn't get to this slide when Shelley was talking, but for the benefit of the board, you know, and you can see that this is both parts of that proposal then, that moving this section of Clear Meadows into the Columbia Valley zone and then moving the Simran neighborhood from Columbia Valley to Hearthwood and doing those two things together allows Columbia Valley's enrollment to stay roughly the same because they also are considered right-sized. And so if we move people in, it's best if we move people out. Okay. So now on to the other side of the district. And as I mentioned before, the work, of course, you know, the committee does not proceed in a linear fashion. You know, it can bounce around at times and, but Shelley, or excuse me, Adrian and Holly will take us through this part. So Adrian and Holly, why don't you guys take it away and just let me know when you want me to switch the screen to the next slide.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Adrian and I am a Fisher's Landing parent. So this was actually, obviously, the the biggest problem when our committee came together, it was looking at this patchwork. So if you look north of the the green up there, that those students are bussed to Ellsworth. And then the, and then the Furcrest patch and then the Marion patch. So as the other committee members mentioned, when we started this, we really did think moving the old Evergreen Highway area was going to be the solution, but it became this domino effect of like, okay, if we move them, then we move River View, then we move Crestline and then where do they go? And it just wasn't working out. Plus, we have that huge barrier there of two oh five freeway that we did not want children crossing, which is much different than just a major roadway. So we were, in looking at numbers, Ellsworth and Marion are both growing quite a bit with the new buildings and we realized that if we just looked at the areas west of two oh five, we could right-size the schools population-wise, just with using those areas and not touching Furcrest or River View or the old Evergreen Highway area. So let me check my notes as well. The other thing with, and originally looking at moving old Evergreen Highway to Ellsworth, we, two things, one, it's, it's a really far distance. So it's two, from the old Evergreen area to Fisher's Landing is between two and two and a half miles and to Ellsworth is between three and a half and four miles, depending on where you live in that area. And then also the, what we really didn't like was that if the old Evergreen section of students went to Ellsworth, they would still be slated to go to Chehalah, whereas everyone else at Ellsworth goes to Y East. And we didn't like that those students would go to middle school, a complete, a middle school on the opposite side of the district without any of their classmates. And with the Clear Meadows section, that's obviously not a problem. So take a good look at the patches now, before we go to the next slide. But with Marion, obviously that being dual immersion, that was a whole different kind of struggle because we didn't want to affect the dual immersion numbers. And if we go to the, go and go to the next slide, Scott. If you look here, we are really careful to focus on the west side of town. A lot of the Spanish-speaking students live, sorry, west side of the the boundary. We didn't, we really wanted to make sure we left those students in Marion. And of course, a natural boundary here that is, is not ideal is Mill Plain Boulevard. But the way it stands now, students from Ellsworth drive all the way north of the current Furcrest boundary down past Ellsworth. So when we came up with the new boundary lines, which you'll see in a minute, we do still have a patch of students that are going to have to cross Mill Plain, but there are currently students crossing Mill Plain. And since they will be bussed, it's, it, when we talk about the safety of students, we always want the safety of students, but with bus, that's when buses are offered. We're not talking about walking. So here's the new boundary lines. This right sizes both schools. We did have to go north of Ellsworth a little bit. But, and so those students would have, will have to be bussed across Mill Plain. But like I said, currently, the students in the very north patch of the new Marion boundary are currently bussed all the way down. So it was kind of a trade-off there. I'm going to go and let Holly take over from here.
Um, I, sorry, I got a little distracted writing something. So yeah, as Adrian said, we wanted to make sure that we kept the DI program intact and we wanted to make sure that both schools have the same resources because a lot of the west side has Spanish-speaking families. We did learn that both Ellsworth and Marion have really good Spanish-speaking resources for parents, like translators and things of that sort. One of the things, Scott, if you go to the next slide, this is kind of just a close-up of the area that we're talking about and where these boundaries are. Basically, on the west side, we could right-size both of those schools by just getting rid of the patchwork, which is one of our guiding principles anyways. We just split it basically in the middle or in the middle where it was for students. Scott, if you go to the next one, this will show you the red dots on the south side of this boundary. We didn't want to separate neighborhoods where students face each other. So in these neighborhoods, there are students that face each other and a lot of these students already go to Marion for the DI program anyways. So we wanted to keep this area still going to Marion. Even though it's technically on the Ellsworth side of the boundary, we're going to keep that the same. From my notes, one of the things that was really important to us on this side is keeping feeder patterns, patterns the same. Keeping the kids going to the same high schools, the same junior highs, that is building a community for our children that is huge. I know from personal experience, I went to a different junior high than a lot of my other peers went to, and I didn't know anyone going in. And that's such a formidable time for children. It's, it's good to have people there that you know, that you feel comfortable with, that kind of just builds this environment for you to succeed. One of the things that was brought up for the parents a couple of different spaces was that they didn't like that students were crossing Mill Plain to get to Ellsworth. So that used to be in Marion and now they're crossing down, think Scott. So if you look at the Marion boundary up there, then south of that, that little green patch is north of Mill Plain. We talked about this as, as the committee and we decided that it wouldn't be safe for students to walk that far to school anyway. So this would definitely it wouldn't be safe for students to walk that far to school anyway. So this would definitely be a bus route. Additionally, this isn't the only school in the district that has students crossing Millplain. If you look over the purple area just to the right, on the east side, Millplain Elementary School, those students do all cross Millplain. In our previous one, all of the students from the patchwork quilt in the north side of the Ellsworth District Boundary were also crossing Millplain. And additionally, there are Columbia Valley students that are currently crossing Millplain to get to school. So obviously, we don't want children walking to school from these areas. And to make sure that they're safe, it is currently busing areas. It was really hard for us on the, this side. And I think maybe from what we've talked with Scott and some of the other parents, we had a really big challenge of getting rid of some of these patchwork. We just think as a group, it was really important to keep our communities together and, and keep our kids going to the same schools. And making kids bus thirty minutes to school doesn't really seem like we're keeping our communities together. That being said, we did have some feedback from parents that we shouldn't be moving students from certain areas just because of of new developments and that those shouldn't, students should be bused somewhere else. And to say to that is, I think that's kind of how we got in this position in the first place with all the patchwork. I think that, you know, it may suck for some families to go through this process now, but I think in the long term, what we're doing is really going to affect our communities in a positive way. Adrian, did you have anything else to add, or any of the other parents?
No, I think that's it. It's just, it's really hard with. It, I've, when we, this plan, when we looked at it overall, we really, we have to affect some families, but we really did affect the least amount. We didn't do the domino, domino effect of affecting Riverview, then Crestline, then Furcrest. And then on the other side, there was a suggestion to send the Clear Meadows folks to Ilahi, and then Ilahi to Columbia Valley, which one was off the table, because we weren't allowed to deal with Ilahi, but also that would be affecting double the amount of parents. So that was a huge, a huge challenge. And we went through every single email and suggestion that parents gave us. But this, this is the one that makes the most sense to us, so. That's it.
Okay, nice work. So, so again, just like last time, you know, for the benefit of the board, just a couple of things to reemphasize or clarify that were mentioned. You know, the tough part here on this side, the part that we agonized over the most was how close in proximity this dividing line is or appears to Marion Elementary. That was a really tough thing, so let me zoom in on that a little bit. In talking with our Transportation Department, which of course, we or I on behalf of the committee do, you know, throughout this process, asking questions about, you know, safety and bus zones and all of that. You know, we learned that there is a very small section, I think it's right here, this section where my cursor is hovering, that is actually a walking area to Marion. And then the rest of it is all a bus zone, which doesn't, of course, mean that there wouldn't be more families perhaps that would choose to walk their kids to school, or allow them to walk to school, or ride their bikes, or what have you. And so that was reflected in some of the feedback as well. And then the last thing I'd point out, and it was mentioned before, but this actually, this work actually comes from our Transportation Department and is consistent with the work that they do or that we do in, in many areas of the district. Because if a dividing line, so to speak, between two schools goes down a residential street where the houses face each other on either side, then, you know, as was mentioned, it's important to us to make sure that the, you know, the whole street, so to speak, goes to the same school. And so all of those purple dots there, even though they appear green on the map, because that's how the program does it, that's, they're all actually remaining at Marion based on that work. So I'll wrap it up and then, you know, we'll turn it over to the board with, who have any questions, or Mike, or anybody who have any questions, either for myself or for the parents that are here. So just a couple of things to note in terms of, you know, the guiding principle number five. And so, you know, these are the, the two main areas that we looked at at different times throughout the process. I mean, right from the beginning, just as the first parent committee did in Phase One of the work, we were paying very close attention to, you know, the socioeconomic factor and how many students on free introduced lunch were at each school, and also where they lived, where the pockets were, because we wanted to make sure that we didn't make a recommendation that might cause those numbers to fall in such a way that either state or federal funding would be affected for the school. And then we also looked at the student ethnicity breakdown, even early in the process, especially with the knowing about the DI program over at Marion and looking at that. But then also, as I think was mentioned, looking on the east side in the Fishers Landing area at the socioeconomic and student ethnicity diversity in each of those neighborhoods as well. And while that is something that we, the committee, had looked at, you know, it turned into a much deeper dive in that regard. And to, and to me, this is a great example of the process working, because during the community forum for Fishers Landing, there were, there was a couple that asked some questions about the relative diversity of the section of Clear Meadows that we are recommending to the board change next year to Columbia Valley. And so I was able, you know, at that time, based on parent feedback and based on their collective advocacy really, to, to meet with Clarissa, go through all of the methodology with her, show her where the diversity is in those areas of the Fishers Boundary that border Columbia Valley. And then I was able to meet via Zoom with the parents that had asked the question, and they wanted to follow up with me. And so I provided them with some information to show them that while we were aware and were also celebrating the diversity in the section of Clear Meadows that we are recommending, that the diversity in the surrounding neighborhoods was actually much greater, including the east side of Clear Meadows. And so, you know, again, not to take away anything in terms of celebrating the diversity that exists in that neighborhood, but pointing out that the neighborhoods around it have a lot more diversity than that section does. And so that's a big part of what we looked at. And then here, this is important for, you know, the board and folks to know. So this is the original projected enrollment for each of the schools at the conclusion of, the initial conclusion of the work. So when we wrapped things up in April and then made the decision to wait until fall in the hopes that we could meet in person, like I mentioned before, these are the projected enrollment numbers at that time for each of the schools. And so, you know, you can see then that since our definite, working definition, again, depending on, you know, the size of the school and all of that, and this is all work that we do with Sue and with facilities and Rilin, has been super helpful along the way in this regard. You see that Columbia Valley is pretty much smack dab in the middle of that range that we desire, between 450 and 550, as is Ellsworth and Marion, when they're being rebuilt. And so there, I mean, that gives you an idea of the importance of, on the west side of the district, of that dividing line between Marion and Ellsworth. Because there really is no way, from our perspective, to have Marion have that entire area north of Millplain and not go over capacity. And more importantly, than to not have the room that we know we're going to need in the future as we, the district, expand the dual immersion program from one classroom per grade level to two. So, you know, we, at the time that we landed, and again, these are projected enrollment numbers in April, we're very happy where this landed. And so then, just to finish out things there for the sake of full perspective, as you saw a little bit earlier, our recommendation includes removing a patchwork quilt from Furcrest, which actually drops it below the target that we would have for Furcrest. Our idea there, from a district perspective, is that we would like to also include Furcrest in Phase Three of the work, because when Burton is built and Burton moves a little bit closer to Endeavor, the idea is that we engage with parents from those areas as well as some others to take some of the enrollment pressure off of Endeavor and hopefully return those apartment complexes that basically overlook Endeavor and currently go to Furcrest to Endeavor. And so it's reasonable to assume that the dividing line between Furcrest and Endeavor will change and that Furcrest enrollment then will, will rise as part of the Phase Three work. And then Hearthwood, which right now is our smallest elementary school, and of course, right now is even smaller than what this number projects. The, if approved, moving the Simran Neighborhood, and it's approximately fifty or so students from Columbia Valley to Hearthwood, helps us get that a little bit bigger as well. And then there may be some things we can do in Phase Three to increase that perhaps. But that's a year or two down the road, because Burton is scheduled, I think, to open in the fall of 2023. So we've got a little bit of time before that work begins. And then the last thing that I would share, and this was mentioned a little bit before, but it, it bears repeating, and it did come up in feedback that we got. This shows the current feeder patterns, elementary, middle, and high for Columbia Valley. So on the left side, what you see is that, you know, the students that live in that Simran Neighborhood, which is the current Columbia Valley Patch, they obviously go to Columbia Valley. And then they go to Pacific and Evergreen, and that part doesn't change. But what you note from that is that the students in that area do not go to middle school or high school with any other of their elementary classmates, because those in the CB main area go to Chehalah and either Union or Mountain View, depending on where they are. And as we all know, when we adjust elementary school boundaries, that doesn't change anything as far as middle and high school goes. So if approved, one of the things that we're excited about for elementary students in the future that live in the Simran Neighborhood is that obviously they would go to Hearthwood if approved. Then they would still go to Pacific, but this time they would go to Pacific with some of their Hearthwood classmates. And then when high school time comes, they're going to high school, to Evergreen High School with everybody that they went to elementary school with. So it's a much more attractive feeder pattern to us if that change ends up being approved. And then on the Fishers Landing side, and I include this only because it came up in feedback in terms of, you know, there were some emails that talked about disrupting the feeder pattern and the effect that that would have on kids. And so, you know, without intentionally taking any, anything away from that perspective, what this shows, folks, is that if Clear Meadows, that section, is eventually approved to go to Columbia Valley, then they still, those students still go to Chehalah with all of their classmates. And they go to Mountain View as well with some of their classmates, because the Columbia Valley main area, as I call it, is already split with some or most, I think, of the students going to Union. But a good-sized chunk of them going to Mountain View High School as well. And so to, from our collective perspective and working with the committee, this move makes sense as well and doesn't do anything to negatively affect that. Now, that's our perspective, but of course, perspectives differ, and you guys have a lot of feedback related to this and everything else. So, so that's what we have for folks tonight. At this time, I mean, with Mike's approval, and I don't know how, how you all want to do this, we are here to answer any questions or go back over anything. And I included the proposed alternatives, because I know that you have them in that summary document that I provided, that I didn't know, you know, if the board wanted us to go through each of those and speak as to why ultimately we are making the recommendation and sticking with our initial recommendations. So I'll, I'll turn it back over to Julie or Mike, or however you guys want to do this. And I'll stop sharing my screen for now, but I can always reshare it if anybody wanted to take a look at another one of those images for the sake of a question or anything.
Julie, do you, you all want to ask any questions you might have?
Yeah, I'm sure that we probably have some questions. First, I want to thank everybody who has worked on the committee. It's not easy work. Many, many factors go into it. You know, as we build new schools and have, can hold more students and more capacity at some of those buildings, we have to make some tough decisions, how to even out the students throughout the district. So I know it's really hard work and want to thank you all for your time and effort that you put in for the committee. One of my main questions that I have is about portables. So with the proposed changes, what, what does this do for our portable situation at the elementaries? Because I think that's been one of our goals and probably in our bond work, is less students in portables.
For sure. So, well, so fortunately, as has always been the case throughout this construction, when Marion and Ellsworth reopen, they will not have any students in portables, because they will have the projected capacity in their building. And so there won't even be, correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but portable, there won't even be portables on site. So we have an opportunity there to eliminate several of those. I'm not sure of the exact number, but we're definitely making progress in the right direction with the construction of those elementary schools. As far as, you know, Columbia Valley also does not have any portables, and this proposal would, you know, not drastically change its enrollment, because you're adding, you know, proposed, adding one section and then taking away another. So that would stay about the same. And then at Fishers, there would be the possibility to eliminate some portables, I guess, depending on, well, a lot of this really, quite frankly, depends on, okay, what do, what type of enrollment do we open with next fall? Because again, and I, I probably should have reemphasized this before, all of this work that has been presented tonight and based on the screens you've seen, all of it is based on what the projected enrollment was, you know, pre-COVID, if you will, right? And, and we all know, you all know, that enrollment across the district, but definitely across the elementary system is down quite a bit. And, and so you noted that in some of the alternative proposals that you saw, because some of the folks have asked, well, wait a minute, with enrollment down, why, you know, if people are basically saying, are you sure it's necessary to do this? Can't, can't you just not do it because enrollment's down? Our, our working theory, if you will, because this is very much not an exact science when you do this work, even in the best of times, is that enrollment will return. You know, a, as you guys know, you know, Mike is unfailingly accurate in terms of projecting enrollment, not necessarily where it's going to be always, but in terms of overall numbers. And so to have our enrollment across the elementary system down as much as it is, we are choosing, based on what's been recommended to you tonight, to believe that, once this pandemic is behind us, that the enrollment will return. And that will return closer to those projected enrollment numbers that I shared with you earlier. And so if, you know, to continue that example, Julie, if we were to Um, and so, um, if, you know, to continue that example, Julie, if we were to reduce the enrollment at Fisher's by approximately fifty kids, um, then that could result in you know, one less class out in the portable or maybe technically even two, but of course there's no way to know that because you know, we have to wait and see. And the other factor there is that, um, you know, a large part of why we are doing this as we move through the work, and I think this was briefly mentioned before, um, is because there is new construction within the Fisher's Landing current attendance area. I think it's, uh, um, a hundred and twenty-six multifamily units that are being built in the southeast corner. Um, I think it's a development that actually straddles, um, our district and the Camus district. So the one hundred and twenty-six multifamily units, that's the evergreen part of it, if that makes sense.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I phased out for a second. You were talking about the Fisher's Landing construction that's proposed?
Uh, yeah, I mean, Sue could probably speak more to that, or I could get you more information. I mean, to the best of my knowledge, last time we looked, it's called a hundred and ninety-second Station West Lofts. So it's, um, you know, multifamily units or housing, um, a hundred and twenty-six units that are going in in that section. At that time, at the time that we did this work and completed it in April, that was the information that we had with regard to that.
Is that proposed for the, for the land between, um, I guess what used to be HP property and and, uh, Clear Meadows or a different location?
Um, it's down in the southeast corner. I'm looking at a map here, Rob, and so it, uh, it straddles, looks like southeast Twentieth Street, um, going east to west. And southeast a hundred and ninety-second avenue going north to south. And so our section is on the west side of a hundred and ninety-second. So did I peg that right?
I, I think that's right.
I, I think if you guys go, it should be on the public website. If you scroll down to facilities, we keep our subdivision tracking report on there. And as we get impact fees, we take off proposed development to try and track how many houses are really coming. It's really hard to predict, but um, it's a good tool to be able to kind of see where we anticipate the growth coming. And I can send you the link to the spreadsheet in Google Docs. It should be on the website, though. And Julie, I do really appreciate that. Get rid of the portables comment, because ultimately that's the, that would be the goal. Get them all in bricks and mortar.
So. Sorry, Rob.
Yeah, the, the link could be nice. I, I don't know if you were going to ask another question, Julie, but I have one more. Yeah, related to Marion proposal.
Oh, I, I do have one more question, if you're okay. So the works for this committee started pre school closing last March, correct?
Correct.
And so we know that enrollment, where I think Mike said it earlier in his report, we're down a thousand in elementary across the board.
It's something between eight hundred and a thousand, somewhere in that range, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's correct, Julie.
I don't even know if I have a really question. It just, that's a big variable and, you know, where students will land. Um, when we get them back in the seats, all of them back in the seats, not necessarily just in a hybrid or small groups or whatever. But when we get all the students back, you know, where, where people moved, where are they going to be? Because right now you could, you know, it doesn't really matter, just like I said earlier about the gala, it doesn't matter where we are, we can attend the gala, right?
Yeah.
Not where I'm at, I can attend elementary school, so.
No, it's a huge variable. There's no question. I mean, I'm looking at, um, and I have to look away from the camera to see this. So I'm looking at, uh, you know, the elementary enrollment doc now that, um, all of our folks in the elementaries keep up so well. And, yeah, I'm looking at a screen that shows what we initially thought would be the projected enrollment for each elementary. And then what it is today, basically, or within the last couple of days. So you know, looking at the schools that we're talking about tonight, um, you know, Fisher's Landing was projected to open with five hundred and forty-eight students. Um, currently they have five hundred and eight, so, uh, they're down forty. Right? So hence, in some people's mind, the question of, well, are we sure we have to do this? Because enrollment is down. It's down everywhere, um, at all twenty-two elementary schools by some. So Fisher's is down forty, uh, let's see here. Uh, Columbia Valley is, um, down seventy-four students approximately over what was projected. Marion is down sixty-three, Furcrest is down eighty-four. And where's Ellsworth? Ellsworth is down thirty-two, right? Based on what we were planning for as far as staffing goes and that kind of thing. So, um, in my documents, um, and I know that, you know, my, in my world, my, you know, my numbers look a little bit different than Mike sometimes because he has different variables and factors that he knew. But just as a matter of one perspective, as far as enrollment goes, um, what I show right now in this document is that elementary is down slightly more than eleven hundred students, based on, you know, right now, based on what we thought. You know, pre-COVID was going to come in. So it's a huge factor. There's no question of that.
Thanks, Scott. Rob, did you want to ask your question?
Yeah, could you pull up the slide, Scott, with the Northeast Ninth Street on it, Marion boundary?
Marion, okay, yep.
The question about Ninth is, um, and I'm drawing this from the memory of having gone to this school, okay?
And this, this slide, Rob, or the next one?
No, the next one with the, yeah, the close-up view.
Gotcha.
That green line represents what I remember as a walking path that went through between houses and out to Northeast Ninth. Giving kids a way to walk to school without having to go around Ninety-seventh or down a hundred. Is that opening still there?
Um, yes, I believe so. It's, it's still indicated on the map. And I think that's the part of, uh, that's why I believe. Um, and I can triple check, Rob, but that's why I believe when I, in my conversation with Doreen, that factors into this being a walking area because of that, because of that safe passage.
It is, it is still there, Rob, because I've gone through it a few times on a bike in the last few months.
Yeah.
So the purple dots represent homes that would be still, are you, are you planning to draw the, are you proposing to draw the boundary behind those homes?
Well, it's, um, I mean, it's, I mean, this is how the, the software that we use draws that in terms of that, and then transportation does their thing.
Right.
Um, and, uh, and every year, especially when something changes, um, you know, we always get a few phone calls and there can be a little bit of confusion if you're really close to that. You know, we had a few situations with the new boundary line between, uh, Image and BBC this year that transportation had to help with. So, so these are our working maps for this work. But transportation will do their own thing and, and make it clearer, I suppose. And it's a good point that you bring up about the, you know, the walking area and this or that. I should have mentioned that before, even though it came up a little bit, but that's, um, as you saw in the feedback. I mean, that's one of the things that, uh, many of the parents in Clear Meadows are bringing up is that even though you know, it's approximately, um, you know, one point three miles or something from there, depending on where exactly you live within that neighborhood to, um, get to Fisher's Landing. So even though it's a, it's from a district perspective, it's a bus zone, as, um, I think Shelley mentioned. Um, that entire area is, um, you know, what a lot of families are, are sharing is that they want their kids to walk. Um, now it's, I don't know, I'm not completely privy to what's planned there in terms of, you know, the construction and this or that. But I, I gather, uh, from the feedback we've gotten from parents, that there may be some walking trails through there. Um, or what have you. It won't change the fact that from a district perspective, it is a, a bus neighborhood because of its, uh, relative distance away from Fisher's. Nor will that, of course, change the reality that, um, and again, from a transportation perspective, when we talk with Doreen and crew, the, the Clear Meadows neighborhood, the section that we proposed is actually about as close as you can be to equidistant between Columbia Valley and Fisher's Landing. Um, if you look up an address in the midst of that, it's, uh, it's one point three miles to one school and one point two to the other, or something along those lines. And so, um, from our perspective, um, the, we are meeting with this recommendation, the guiding principle of ensuring safety because, um, we are busing students, um, whether they go to Fisher's or go to Columbia Valley. Um, and then.
We've had a long practice of, um, taking those busy streets like, I guess that's, uh, Southeast Thirty-Ninth through Thirty-Eighth and, and just if you have to cross that street at all, you're being offered a bus ride.
Uh, yeah, I mean. Yeah, that's the reality around the district. And as, um, you know, was shared earlier by Adrian and Holly, I mean, the right now and for a long time, really for as long as, as I can remember, I don't even know how it came to be. It's been so long. Uh, the district has been busing that section to the north, all the way past Marion to Ellsworth. Um, we are proposing to eliminate that and the approximately thirty-minute bus ride to and from that those students, um, uh, need to endure, if you will, each day when they're bussed. And instead, offering or recommending, um, a much shorter bus ride. But there's no question that it's still a bus ride, right? Because Mill Plant is Mill Plant.
Right.
Um, you know, that's part of the deal.
The, the Ellsworth Exclave was the Burton Ridge and Oakbrook neighborhoods, up next to the golf course and country club, right? That's.
Oops. Now I'm going to share the screen again. Do you want to see something, Rob?
I'm, yeah, I'm kind of looking on another screen at a satellite map of the region.
Okay.
But yeah, that, that's something that was a concern of mine when we started this work two years ago, was why was Ellsworth's population so far apart and?
Oh, right. Well, um, is that, oh wait, there we go. Now can you see it? Okay. Well, I, I have not been able to find anybody that can remember why it is the way that it currently is, right? I mean, Doreen did, it's just been that way, you know, for a long time that this section where my, this Oakbrook area has been part of Ellsworth. So, um, again, to us and, um, you know, the members of the parent committee that are here, you know, I think did an excellent job of explaining, um, that to, to us. From our collective perspective, this is a much more attractive proposition.
Oh, go ahead. Can I add something that we forgot to mention? So the original map, if you remember, had Ellsworth at the top, a little patch, and then Furcrest and then Marion. So those Furcrest students have been crossing two oh five for years and years and years. And by, um, we forgot to add that by putting that northern patch with the Furcrest patch into Marion, we have a limited students from Furcrest, which next year will, um, those kids that are, that the Furcrest kids that currently go to Endeavor will also be, um, we're, we're trying to get rid of that patch as well. So it made a, it kind of affected everything, but also just not having them cross two oh five. Cause that was, that's a big deal.
They come to school on a bus down Ninety-Eighth.
No, yeah, I don't know what the bus ride is, but just saying like getting, you know, they're not going to cross that large.
It's the, it's the major arterial.
Yeah.
Down that road. Okay, okay.
What schools are in phase three?
Uh, well, I mean, you know, we haven't got there yet, right? So there's more conversation to be had, but without question, uh, Burton will be in that because that's the one that's being rebuilt, right? Um, Endeavor will certainly in my mind be in that because that is, um, our most overcrowded school. And here, let me go back to.
And Columbia, Columbia Valley was originally supposed to be in phase three. Is that what I understood?
Yeah. Um, yeah, that was my pics, that was my original picture, was that Columbia Valley would be part of phase three specifically for the purpose of, um, hopefully removing that patchwork quilt and, um, increasing the enrollment at Hearthwood. So when the parent committee came and said, could we do that now? To me, it made sense. Um, you know, like I mentioned before, we got some feedback from some parents that, you know, perhaps said that makes sense to us too, but we're not happy about, you know, not being on the committee or being consulted until we got to the community forum stage. And, uh, but in answer to your question, you know, as I see it at this moment in time, I mean, certainly Burton is part of phase three because it's being rebuilt. Endeavor, without question in my mind, is part of phase three because of its relative proximity to Burton. And because of how crowded it is right now, um, you know, even in the COVID situation, it's still, you know, has a lot of kids there. Um, and then the other thing you can see is, you know, these are the different areas that came in after Endeavor was built. These areas that are in yellow that currently go to Furcrest. We'd like to see with the aid, of course, of a parent committee, if we can do something about that and maybe do something with you know, moving this line, the line on Eighteenth and moving down here and busing some of these kiddos to Furcrest. So that these that live closest can go to Endeavor. So, so certainly those and possibly Hearthwood as well.
So when we did phase one, his Emerald was being constructed. It was a brand new school, so we had to move kids to go to the school, right? Cause there was nobody in that attendance boundary.
Correct.
So that, I, cause right now it feels like now, it's like, well, if we do this, now we've got this other school that's going to be impacted. And they kind of merge, it's like how Columbia Valley got pulled into this conversation when it was supposed to go for phase three. And it almost feels like you could, you could talk about that with every school. So what, I mean, what would be the, um, impact if we waited to see like how enrollment was? And then brought all of the schools in the conversation at the same time would?
Hmm. You mean like push, like push pause on this work, did nothing right now and waited?
Yeah, cause I mean, I even look at like Furcrest and how there's that patch of those apartments, because that's, I remember when we made that decision because Endeavor was bursting at the seams. And so we took the new apartments that went in for Furcrest. Or we, those new apartments that were built right behind Endeavor and we bused those kids to Furcrest, right? And they're, they literally are in the neighborhood of Endeavor.
Correct.
And that needs to be addressed at some point. And so it's like all of these schools are overlapping where we're probably going to affect more Furcrest kids moving forward. Um, I don't know, it just, it feels like with any school, you kind of get into the next school's boundary where it makes more sense to. I don't know, maybe we look at.
Well, I mean, like you said, or like I said earlier, I guess it's, um, you know, even without the pandemic, it's not an exact science, right? And the pandemic, without question, introduces some uncertainty or some variables, or at least exacerbates them to where, you know, these are thoughts that folks have in terms of, well, wait a minute here, what, you know, what should we do? Um, yeah, I do know that it's part of the original methodology when this work started, um, to um, there, you know, there were two things, the first two things, um, that Matt Handelman and I learned in our work with Marcia as we got prepared to start this work was, you know, she said to us, don't involve a school unless you have to. If it's okay the way it is, do your best to leave it alone. Um, and she said, don't do too many schools at the same time, because the, the work will get too convoluted and it will prove to be unmanageable. And that's when mistakes are made. And so, um, in this case, um, up until this point at least, it's been really easy to, um, make sure that we don't do all the work at the same time. Because the construction schedule, based on the two thousand eighteen bond, you know, dictates in large part the timing of this work, right? Because you have to time things based on when, when Emerald opens and when the new Sifton opens and the new Image and all of that. So, so your timeline is kind of up to this point at least is kind of made for you based on when schools are going to open. Um, but there is no question, in my mind at least, Julie, that the decline in enrollment introduces a variable that none of us would have considered. Um, and so it's a question of, uh, you know, what, what is going to happen? So, I mean, in my opinion, you know, that's the kind of thing that, um, you know, we'd want to heavily involve Sue in in terms of projections and construction, what. you know, we'd want to heavily involve Sue in in terms of projections and construction, what it's going to do, we'd want to talk, you know, a lot more about that with Mike and Sue, I think, and with you all in terms of that, which we have time to do because of the process, right? Because you know, we've got, you know, first reading is currently scheduled for roughly a month from now and second reading a month after that. So you know, the process and the timeline that's there, you know, does allow for that kind of exploration and consideration. There's no question.
Mike or Scott, do you expect that, given the reduced enrollment numbers, there might be some flex to grant some equity based boundary exceptions if the family applies after these changes?
We we allowed many boundary exceptions. I think this year we pretty much opened the boundaries this year.
Yeah, I I'd have to go back and check, Rob, to be a hundred percent certain, but I am almost positive that at the elementary level, we didn't say no to a single request. Because there was no reason to because the decline in enrollment meant that there was plenty of space. You know, there may have been one or two based on the size of the grade level, but I honestly can't remember saying no to anybody. And and that said, you know, I don't know that that would be the same situation, you know, next fall because none of us know for sure what that's going to look like. I mean, our operating theory is that when the when the pandemic is passed, that the enrollment is going to return. And these numbers are going to hold up. But I of course, I can't look anybody in the eye and say that I know that's going to occur because I don't.
Now, let me just recognize too, what Julie recognized is that it's it's difficult work. I appreciate those who stuck with you and all of you for engaging with in it this way. I have to say, having visited pretty much all the schools, I really like Columbia Valley. It's a neat school. It's got a great culture and a great welcoming culture and and its emphasis on the way that they adapted their mascot to include Native American culture, especially in the region, is just astounding to me. It's in a good way. So I want to speak positively of Columbia Valley as an opportunity.
I agree, Rob. They're they're a great school and they've got a lot going on there. It's it's a neat little area where they're a hat, too. It's just kind of unique. I'm kind of with Julie on the I'm feeling like if we could just slow the pace down a little bit till we can see, you know, especially now that they're talking about a potential vaccine that may be available, you know, fairly quickly. And but if if it if that doesn't come to fruition and it's going to be longer dealing with the virus, then it seems like with the numbers that are down that we may not have to make all of those moves right away. I don't know. I just I I'm just I have an unsettled feeling about the pace at this point, just because that that number variable that we just don't know what what the total number of kids are going to be does make me wonder.
I have this picture of once the pandemic comes to an end with a provable vaccine, if that actually plays out, the enrollment numbers will kind of take a everybody will want to come back with some very few exceptions. I I think we'll actually see that very sharply and maybe even midyear if things proceed as optimistically as as hope kind of urges us to hope. Or just has to hope, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I appreciate you saying that it's unknown when it's the best answer when we don't know because we don't know.
Kindergarten enrollment is down significantly, too, isn't it? I think there are kids that enrolled.
Yes, I think thirteen hundred and maybe thirty or forty, and we were e- even expecting a de- decline there at sixteen hundred. So we're probably over thirteen hundred or excuse me, three hundred down in kindergarten. And I will say kindergarten is the only grade that actually is seeing enrollment increase at this point. And I I think that that honestly has something to do with the fact that that they're at least getting some time on site.
But I think that next year, our kindergarten enrollment, especially if we're back in in person, could really increase because people could be holding back their kids until they turn six.
Yeah.
So just because they don't want to miss that year of instruction.
It's not a requirement at kindergarten, so I could see families absolutely thinking, why not hold back a year? And if they have the ability to do that, and then and then starting a year later.
Right on the age.
Yeah, yeah. They gotta have the best first grade team when they start getting those basketball teams together, those that's it's been a long night.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, that I was just pulled up Patrick Ginn's website because living across the street from Endeavor, I've seen kind of what's happened and it's doing all these boundary changes and school changes kind of give me anxiety, especially when I see all of the stuff that Patrick is building around here, including all of Joe's farm with Joe retiring, all the stuff between Eighteenth and Ninth that's going in on the other side of Evergreen Memorial. The stuff that's going in up against the new admin office at Lira Hagan like that, a lot of that is going to funnel to Furcrest. I mean, actually, all of that is funneling to Furcrest. And so that that concerns me because the schools around Furcrest are already at max capacity. There's no room at Endeavor. It is so it's I I think that we may end up having to do this again if we if we start moving too many schools right now.
And that's kind of why I brought up Endeavor because I feel like it's part of the conversation, especially with Furcrest. But
Even the people that move into my neighborhood and I literally am across the street and and we're not at one of the new developments. Their bust to Hearthwood or wherever is available.
Right. And that's all true, not to take anything away from that, but don't, you know, please don't lose sight of, you know, part of this proposal creates additional space for Crest for that future growth, right? Or for that movement. And then
But is it enough is my concern.
No, that's yeah. And you know, and that's another you know, I can't answer that with a hundred percent certainty question.
Where's your crystal ball? Come on, Scott.
You know, I mean, we can say with certainty that that there would be, you know, obviously increased room at Furcrest, right? And we could say, even with the addition, if approved of Simran going to Hearthwood, that there is still capacity there because that's been declining in enrollment for years. And so and and on the plus side of things, just in a holistic way of looking at that, with those two being relatively centrally located, that gives us potentially some options as we move forth.
So we we can, we can go back and look at the the issues that you've raised. Julie, Victoria, Rob and Ginny. I think the next step was a it was it was a December first reading or a January first reading? December, right? So so
The next meeting.
Yeah, December eighth. So I I think we need to kind of hear what you're saying, hear what the everyone's kind of adding into this and see if we can come up with some sort of solution. I mean, I think, like you said, Julie, not only the commitment committee puts in time, Scott as well. So I mean, it it's like, there's a lot of really good work that we need to we need to take into account. But I do think exactly like you're saying, this is a very unique situation where you know, the enrollment in the elementaries is much different than what it would look like in a typical situation. And it might warrant a little bit of a pause in certain areas.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when the kids come back, we we know where they're going to land.
And they're going to come back. They are going to come back. So does that if we if we do a little work and then and then kind of re re kind of reconvene? And I know we're going to meet the eighth, but we can maybe have some conversation. I mean, I know that we have a meeting next week, too.
Yeah.
I understand we'll be virtually at a conference virtually for two or three days as well.
That's going to be interesting.
I'm just I I'm just wondering if that's just enough time in the next few weeks to you know, get information, but I think we'll probably stop talk about it next week at our meeting and go from there.
Scott and Sue and I can get together and have a conversation and and see what we can come up before we meet next week.
Well, let's get what is it scheduled on Tuesday? I don't see it in my calendar.
No, it's it's a it's a Yeah, planning.
Okay.
It's a broccoli meeting. Okay, that sound good?
That sounds good.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for that, all the work. Thank you for the presentation. I like looking at maps, so it's interesting.
Thanks for sticking around to listen to us talk about.
Okay, sounds good. Well, you know, all, you know, Holly and Alicia and Shelley and Adrian, I'll I'll reloop with you guys via email and then follow up by phone tomorrow. You know, I'd like to echo what Mike and so many members of the board said. You know, just how thankful I am that you guys have engaged yourself in this work and done exactly what we've asked in terms of looking at it from, you know, the thirty thousand foot level, so to speak, and it has been and will continue to be a pleasure to work with you. So thank you guys very much for your service and volunteerism for this. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, it very much is.
Okay, so so Mike, I think I heard you say that
We'll meet.
The five of us can skedaddle out of here.
Yes, you can.
You'll be in touch, right?
Yes, unless it people want to stick around because these are very exciting meetings. I know that.
Well, about two hours ago, I heard you say something about beer at Pacific House, so I'm still got that in my head.
There are six of you in Soap and Tell Eleven, I think.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. Good night. Bye.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Next is Equity and Inclusion Update.
Clarissa.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, poor thing been staying all this time.
That's all right. Not a problem. Learned some new things. So just have a few updates for everyone. So first of all, I had the pleasure of having our introduction meeting with the Equity Advisory Committee. They are excited about getting started on the work for many different things. They shared their their why, if you will, for being a part of the committee as well as some things they'd like to see come out of the committee. We also established our next two meetings. So to finish out twenty twenty, we're going to be meeting two more times this year. And the next time we meet will be November nineteenth. And what is happening right now is that we are researching and looking into different existing equity policies in surrounding districts and and further away to consider what elements and components we like to see in in ours. And they will also be putting in their own input based upon some of their experiences as what they like to see in ours. And they're also looking at I have provided them with a couple of examples of equity lenses, which is one of the things I actually shared with our cabinet to begin attempting to use in decision making process, which is it just goes through a couple of not a couple, there's a few questions that you ask yourself as you are making a decision to make sure you are keeping equity at the forefront of that decision. So they're looking into those. And when we meet next time, we're going to be beginning crafting what that will eventually look like. And that will also be eventually presented to the Delt. And speaking of Delt, we will be meeting this Friday to build on what we learned on last time with Louise. And so one of the things that I'd love for you to be thinking about as just as were members as a whole, but also the two that are going to be attending the Delt meeting is just what what goals, especially based on the the review of our beloved community audit information, what specific goals you would like to set for the board pertaining to equity and then how we will monitor those goals and check them. And I, you know, that that can look in many different ways, but I want you to begin thinking about it because for sure that is something that will be discussed at Delt. If you remember, last time, we focused on making sure we knew what our personal entry was to the equity work because it fuels your professional as well as the organizational change that we're looking for. And so be thinking about some goals for you all and how I can support you in those. And then speaking of the personal work, I'm also having some one on one meetings with our extended board and to talk with extended, excuse me, extended cabinets, not extended board, to talk about their personal connections to equity work as well, and then how that will manifest within their particular areas of supervision and areas of influence. I mean, those have been very pleasant. Most of our extended cabinet members have some really passionate stories to share about their entry into equity work. And it's it's always very fascinating to hear that. We are also having our first facilitators meeting this Thursday. These facilitators will be helping to co-facilitate our community affinity group meetings that are going to be coming up. And obviously, those meetings will be it's based on their availability. So we'll be setting those dates as well on Thursday in speaking with the facilitators. We'll also be walking through what the structure of those of this first meeting will look like. Keeping in mind that in order for us to be responsive to that group, that if we come already with all the things that we want to do and all the structures we want to put into place that that further, you know, silences their voice. So they have to have some input into that and will be responsive and flexible as they share that with us. So that Thursday is when we'll be meeting with the facilitators. And those are really volunteers of people who have from the from the Equity Committee, but as well as just community members, some administrators, a couple of former colleagues from Portland Public who have just volunteered their time to help facilitate these meetings. And so just like Mike mentioned before, our political and social expression guidance was a joint effort. A lot of the things that I am having the opportunity to be a part of have been joint efforts. And it just gives me a lot of great pleasure and hope when we're looking into advancing our equity work, knowing that we have this growing network of of folks who are willing to give their time to see that this work is effective and has better outcomes for our students. And then, let's see, finally, I met with oh, no, I already said that. Oh, look at that. I went through them faster than I thought. That's it. Those are my updates.
Did you say Delt?
Correct. District. And it actually would be Delt if I said all the the E's, but it's District Executive Equity Leadership Team. Correct. District. And it actually would be DLP if I said all the the Es, but it's District Executive Equity Leadership Team.
Education and acronyms. That is computer science.
I know.
So Jenny and I are on that team.
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Okay. 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 The joint statement. How many districts have published so far? But I didn't write the number down.
I believe, you know what? I don't want to misspeak. I know for sure that Canvas was right after or right alongside us. So they may have already put theirs out, but we're, we were probably right at the same time. My shoe will still working on it as well as
Vancouver. We talked in discussing the document about approaching community groups. When is the right time to do that work?
I'm sorry, I say, what was the
Community groups like LULAC or NAACP or
Oh, that would be now. Yeah, now.
So I should go down to our notes and take the pieces that I that I said I'd try and take and go take them.
Yes.
Very good. I'll take that as a work item.
Okay.
I think it was
I'm confused. What what is it you're gonna do, Rob?
Ask community stakeholder groups to sign on.
Oh, I'll say.
As aligned with the statement of the equity statement that is prepared. This document is to me like an institutional sort of more inward-facing thing anyway. But if there are groups out there who will sign on and say, yes, we support the schools in this internal effort, then that accrues positively for the kids.
So do we have the list of the different organizations that we want to meet with?
There was a rainstorm.
Yeah, we talked about it in our collaborative group with the districts that I mentioned just earlier. And each of us have, you know, some some organizations that we were already linked to. And so we just kind of listed those. LULAC was one, NAACP was another. We just kind of went through. And then we put our names beside the ones that we'd reach out to to share the guidance with them and then ask if that was something that they would support.
Who, you and Rob or are there other people reaching out?
So myself, Rob, and then the representatives from the other districts that I mentioned.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I can show you the list that we came up with. Click here.
And it's not exhaustive by any means. It's just
It's just kind of an idea. Yes, I want to continue. Thank you, Lori. And I want screen four. Is that large enough?
Can't see.
It's not large enough.
We can forward along the the pre-copy if you want. You guys can see.
So you see City of Canis at the top. And if I just scroll up a little, there are organizations like Clark College, Middle Class Alliance, Rotary, Port Authority, Police Departments, you can think of. I thought of Mecha. I think that's how you pronounce it. Which one of the committee members, I remember too, that Bethany Revard is very involved at Fort Vancouver High School with Mecha and might be a good resource or a good person to approach that group. Jesse Hyatt was the Excel PTO president, also with the Portland Black Chamber of Commerce. Those were names and these were the names that we thought about.
You're muted, Victoria.
I took them in CPSO, so. Well, I'll get a couple of them.
There you go.
What about the 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 city council and the county commissioners?
I don't remember whether we named them, but yes.
We didn't name them. They're definitely not on the list, but for sure, could reach out.
And there's, I think there's open space for anyone who wanted to take one on and approach their groups to take one on and approach their groups, come back to Clarissa and say
I'd be happy to take the city council, the Vancouver City Council one on.
Awesome.
Is there somebody who wants to take on the what the county commissioners?
Probably approaching Temple Lanson.
Yeah. Don't go to what's her name. I don't have systemic racism.
I can always reach out to Temple.
Thanks, Jenny.
Like I, if someone could approach Diana Perez about a LULAC connection.
Oh, I know Diana really well.
Yeah. So if you could approach her about LULAC.
Okay.
Then that leaves me with two personal relationships to approach. As Jesse and I have spoken two, three times since the pandemic began.
So just so Julie and I can get this stuff entered into our board calendars and our our linkage efforts to make sure those get into our linkage list. Can we get just the list of those and who's assigned to them so we can make sure we get that information into our government stuff?
I don't know that we, there's a list. It's like Clarissa said, it's not complete. And I don't think we got to the level of assignments.
But we can, we can definitely give you what we have.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else? No, thank you, Clarissa. Was it legislative update next?
Yes.
Do we have anything else for legislative?
Yeah, I don't have anything else. I mean, I meet weekly. We're still supposed to set up a meeting with those folks, the leaders in the house for Brett and I to meet and talk about various things around how we've been impacted financially. I think Monica's representative, Stone, you're just trying to get that set up, but it hadn't happened yet, but that's coming. And then the December fourth legislative forum, we'll make sure that we get everybody invited to that.
Okay.
Those House Education Committee listening sessions, the two that are coming, they talked about in the main meeting are the only things that I had to add.
All right, Mike, do you have another superintendent's update?
No, I think you've heard enough from me tonight.
Jenny's shaking her head, yes. Debrief?
Everything went great. I'm sorry. Suffered from a migraine all day, so I'm just kind of it was quick. We actually got through the main part of the board meeting within, what, thirty minutes and got through it pretty quickly, including board comments.
Was that thirty?
Yeah, I think we were done about seven o'clock and going into our
Oh, that's ninety minutes.
Yeah, I was right. We started
I think I rolled out of bed at four thirty this afternoon after having a migraine all day. Still trying to like
Yeah.
Catch myself up. So yeah, I guess it wasn't that quick. It felt like a lot longer than thirty minutes, but I thought that was just me. Everything went pretty good. I had no issues except for Bill's connection. Other than that, Gloria and her tape, but that was before we went live.
I hope Bill sensed our patience with
I'm always here to help entertain you all.
And we love it.
Advancements of technology.
Doesn't feel like advancements in moments like that, though, does it? I mean, when they, when they, when they moved our email addresses to two-factor authentication, I encountered like forty-five minutes of friction just setting it back up.
I never even got mine to do it.
Yeah.
Couldn't let me in. Laurie, poor bless her heart, was trying to figure it out. And so I just said, send it to my phone. I'll deal with that later. I can't think about it right now.
It's hard, it's hard to do the meeting on your phone the whole night, isn't it?
Yes, it is. But either this or no Victoria at the meeting at all. It's not gonna happen.
Well, yeah, and I had no problems waiting as long as we did for the technology to catch up with us. Especially in Bill's case. Because that was clearly nobody's fault, except maybe some engineers at Apple, it sounds like. He sent us an apology in email that I caught.
It's fine. Things like that happen.
I appreciated the, I appreciated the gracious tenor or tone of the comments that we got tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just that sense of balancing a bunch of risk is still with me. Long-term, short-term. But the meeting went well.
All right, anything else? We'll wrap it up. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.